Well, I was thinking tonight when we were talking, if anyone heard us talking, this is not exactly the best marketing pitch. We could have done it to the position either, you know.
Good evening, everyone. This January 8th, 2015, regular school board meeting number 11 of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. The board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in the public at the forum work session which preceded tonight's meeting. If you would like to receive a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance in the back. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website and select School Board and then upcoming meetings and agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch the School Board Live. Please turn off or silence your cell phones, and I will now call on Mr. Latif to introduce some Boy Scouts who I believe are in the audience.
Thank you. We would like to recognize some Boy Scouts in the audience for our meeting tonight from Troop 826, based in Oakton, Virginia. They are working on their citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. Welcome. We would like to also recognize some Boy Scouts from Troop 150, based in Annandale. He is working on his Communication Merit Badge. Welcome. And we'd also like to represent some Boy Scouts from Troop 1966. They're based out of Fairfax. They're working on their citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. I'd like to recognize a fellow elected student leader, Mr. Michael Mauro, the President of the Student Advisory Council. Thank you.
And I see some of our student leaders have stayed tonight, so they were required to come to our forum meeting, but if you're one of our student leaders, if you could please stand right now and be recognized as well. Thank you all for coming. Next on our agenda is the resolution naming the sports complex at Westfield High School, and I call on Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. I've been told that Mr. Doll would not have wanted to be recognized, but I think it's really important that as communities and schools, we really do recognize people that make a difference. And from what I've learned in talking to people and learning about him, he made a difference for our students, for our faculty, for our families, not just at Westfield but across the county. So I'm really proud of Westfield community for bringing this forward, and I'm going to read the resolution now. Whereas Francis L. Doll served Fairfax County Public Schools for 32 years with excellence and dedication, working as a teacher, coach, assistant director, and the Director of Student Activities. His leadership, enthusiasm, and commitment to FCPS and the Westfield High School community inspired countless numbers of his student athletes and colleagues to work hard to achieve their goals and reach their full potential. And whereas Mr. Doll was the founding Director of Student Activities at Westfield High School and a visionary for the creation of the Westfield Sports Complex, during Mr. Doll's tenure, Westfield athletic groups gained district, regional, and state championship titles, and Westfield was awarded the VHSL Academic Covi Cup. He collaborated with educational, political, business, and community leaders to organize the State Jubilee, a showcase of six AAA state championship athletic events, which Westfield continued to host for six consecutive years. And whereas Mr. Doll was a true leader, a man whose actions spoke much louder than his words, he encouraged his coaches, club sponsors, and student athletes to be competitive yet to act with sportsmanship, integrity, and honor, and he demonstrated those qualities through his actions and leadership style. And whereas Mr. Doll's success was recognized with a number of honors and awards, which included nomination to the VHSL Hall of Fame, Fairfax High School Hall of Fame, VHSL Torch of Honor recipient, Washington Post Donald Huff Award, VHSL Regional Award of Merit Administrator, Westfield High School Hall of Fame, Fairfax County Football Hall of Fame, and Carl Davy Memorial Award for Community Achievement. And whereas Mr. Doll was a passionate, enthusiastic, and visionary educator, he dedicated his life to the enrichment of student athletes and encouraged them to strive for excellence in the classroom and on the sports field. He was a mentor and friend to his colleagues and provided continuous encouragement and support as he helped them develop coaching and leadership skills. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, in memory and honor to Francis L. Doll's dedicated service and valued contributions to FCPS and the Westfield High School community, hereby names the sports complex at Westfield High School, the Francis L. Doll Sports Complex. I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Vakov. All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. Thank you. And if everyone... If Mr. Doll's family and those representing the school would like to come down for a photo, would love to have you down here in front with us. Thank you. Next on our agenda, item 2.0, the resolution recognizing Fairfax County Human Trafficking Awareness Month. I call on Mr. McElvee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is a great night for awareness because I'm sure many members of our community have never heard of the Just Ask group and what they do in our schools, which is great work. And it is in fact a collaboration between the school system, the police, and the community, and especially our students, who do work very hard to bring awareness to this very important issue. And we are so proud of them, and in fact, within the next week, Fairfax County is going to be proclaiming January 2015 to be Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And so our efforts here tonight are to support the county in doing so. So whereas human trafficking is the fastest growing criminal enterprise in the world with human traffickers targeting men, women, and children, isolating them from society and supportive networks, and exploiting them for personal and monetary gains, and whereas victims of human trafficking suffer emotional, psychological, and physical horrors at the hands of traffickers who instill fear to keep them enslaved, and whereas the Northern Virginia Human Trafficking Task Force reports that in its first year, October 2013 to September 2014, they identified 253 human trafficking victims and 69 suspects, and 44% of their leads concerned juvenile sex trafficking. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools and the Just Ask Prevention Project have instituted a teen sex trafficking prevention curriculum in grades 6 to 10 and 12, and developed effective awareness campaigns that have become models for other jurisdictions. And whereas student groups at Fairfax County High Schools are raising awareness about teen sex trafficking and activating thousands of teens through their student-run campaigns, now therefore it be resolved that the Fairfax County School Board recognizes the month of January 2015 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Fairfax County and supports the efforts of all those who are working to eliminate human trafficking. I so move.
Thank you. And seconded by Ms. Evans. All of those in favor? And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you. And now if all those from the Just Ask program want to come down and the community supporters as well, will take a picture.
The next order of business is citizen participation. Citizen speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the board. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as the capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. Tonight, six citizens have signed up to address the board. Adriana Lundgren, Debbie Kilpatrick, Kimberly Adams, Tina Hohn, Sheree Brown Kaplan, and George Passera. If we could start with Ms. Lundgren.
Hi. My name's Adriana Lundgren, and I'm a senior at Hernan High School. And for the last month and a half, I've been trying to live a trash-free life, which means only reusing or recycling all my materials. And by doing this, I've noticed around me how much trash I used to use and how much trash we use as a school system. And one of the things that I've noticed a lot is the styrofoam trays we've used at lunch. So styrofoam is very cheap for FCPS, I know, but it has a lot of environmental effects. Styrofoam floats in the ocean if it gets to that point. Some recycling plants don't take it because of the chemicals released, and it's a possible human carcinogen, and 57 chemical byproducts are released while making styrofoam. Now, I know that the styrofoam trays are being used to power homes in FCPS, but by burning them and making that energy, we're still causing a lot of environmental effects. So my proposition is switching from styrofoam to reusable trays. One of the things I found online is that for one type of styrofoam tray, for 500, you could get $52 for 500, but for 500 reusable ones, it would only cost 15 on the website that I saw. I attached the link. So at my school, there's 2,214 students, so that means that for each student, it would cost $66, like for all the students to have a tray. It would also reduce the cost because we wouldn't have to keep buying more to supply them daily. I attached a petition that I put on change.org, and I got 90 signatures of people who also support this. We're teaching children that a throwaway and disposable society is okay, but do we want the future of America to grow up and lead a culture of sustainability, or do we want them to continue this culture of waste? We're taught in school to reduce, reuse, and recycle. There's recycling bins in every classroom, but the styrofoam is a small change but would create a big effect. One possible issue with this is the dishwasher, like how would we wash the trays? One of the ways we could do it is fundraising with like the costs that we would take away from reusable trays and using that towards a dishwasher. Also, if we hired people to wash the trays, that would create new jobs. So overall, I think that switching to a reusable tray would be good for the environment and would set a good message to the students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, Debbie Kilpatrick.
A bit short here. Good evening, Superintendent Garza, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Mr. Latif. I'm Debbie Kilpatrick, and as President of the Fairfax County Council PTAs, representing 175 PTAs and more than 59,000 members, I welcome the opportunity to speak tonight about the 2014 Joint Budget Development Committee Report, as some of the recommendations reflect our council positions and having the goal of doing the best by every child supports submission of PTA. Last May, during the FY15 Fairfax County Budget Hearings, members of our council board testified in support of funding the FCPS budget. But we also spoke in support of funding county services with the recommendation that Fairfax County and the school district worked together to address and resolve the severe financial challenges that Fairfax County continues to face annually. Our council has reached out to other advocacy groups and stakeholder groups to join us in our goal of having one county, one vision, and one future. Last September, at our council general membership meeting, our members voted to support our FY16 county budget strategic campaign and approved Invest in Fairfax as the campaign name. Invest in Fairfax is a broad coalition of community groups and stakeholders dedicated to improving the quality of life for all those who live, play, and do business in Fairfax County. Our goal is to maintain and improve the quality of life in our county. Invest in Fairfax objectives are to increase public engagement in the Fairfax County budget process, develop a single countywide plan that maintains the quality of life in Fairfax County, preserve the high quality of public services, recruit and retain an excellent workforce with fair and sustainable compensation. We understand that these are hard budget times and that require both the board supervisors and the school board to explore all options, and as noted in the JBDC report, setting community-wide priorities are necessary. However, there needs to be an open and clear discussion of priorities for the county that fully and completely engages the public. FCCPTA supports the efforts that the committee has made so far, and will continue to observe future collaborations between the county and the school board and share this information with our membership. Our council will also advocate our goals at the state level with testimony before the Fairfax County delegation on Saturday and on January 26th at the General Assembly in Richmond. Thank you for your service to our students and families. Our council looks forward to continuing our partnership with you in 2015 as we advocate for the education, health, safety, and overall welfare of all the children in Fairfax County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kimberly Adams?
Good evening, Chairman Darrenat Kovak, members of the school board, and Dr. Garza. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I represent the members of the Fairfax Education Association. Happy New Year to you all. I'm speaking to you this evening about item 4.02, Recommendations from the Joint Budget Committee. Tonight, we look forward to your presentation, Dr. Garza, of the superintendent's FY16 proposed FCPS budget. Members in my organization are proud of the work we do every day in our schools, and we appreciate that you have faced the challenge each year that you've been here to do right by your staff, students, and community members. Developing a thoughtful plan to move FCPS forward and continue to push for excellence has not been easy here. We appreciate also that our school board has worked diligently to keep FCPS world-class. The Appointees to the School Board and Board of Supervisors Joint Budget Development Committee, or JBCD, have begun to turn the tenor from internal arguments and broad disagreements to speaking with one voice about what is important and discussing with educational professionals what matters most to our students and ensuring that school and county services are successful. This collaboration has the potential to improve the lives of our students and families in our schools and communities. And I'm proud of the work that our elected officials have been engaged in, from the Joint Budget Development Committee to the Successful Child Youth Policy Team and other areas where strides are being made to work together to reduce redundancies and inefficiencies. These joint opportunities will strengthen the important work that is going on in our community. Members of the FEA have a strong knowledge base from which to share, and we hope to be part of this collaborative work. Members and leaders of the FEA look forward to working with you, Dr. Garza, the school board, and the Board of Supervisors in the upcoming months. The FEA is supportive of the work that the JBCD has done, developing a focused recommendation action plan. While we may not agree with the direction of every one of the action items listed, we do believe that the processes will continue to yield positive results. The setting of joint strategic goals is a good commitment. Basing these goals and metrics of establishing community-wide priorities is critical. Using common language and creating shared glossaries of terms makes sense, and moving toward a multi-year budget is an important step. You have our commitment to this process of gathering input and clearly defining budget priorities for our community. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much. Ms. Tina Hohn?
Dr. Garza, staff, and most of all, school board members. You have made it to the home stretch. Tonight is the first meeting of the last year of your term. Can you believe that? What a term it has been. You have hired a spectacular new superintendent. You have adopted significant changes to FCPS administrative policies. You adopted meaningful reforms to school discipline. You restored full-day Mondays, and you have put the school system on track to healthier later high school start times. It has been a privilege to work with you. But, and y'all knew there would be a but, despite your many accomplishments, there is so much left to do, especially for COTS kids. And there is not much time left. 356 days more or less, and that includes all your weekends and break time. The sense of urgency could not be more acute for COTS. Because of that, we spent the winter break working on our portrait of a school system. An outline of that portrait has been provided to you. Among our recommendations are the following. One, you must require a specific impact analysis before adopting, revising, ending, or changing any policy or program to ensure that the decision will not exacerbate the growing disparities between haves and have-nots in this school system. You must make an inventory of programs and practices, both large and small, to ensure that they do not contribute to this divide. That includes a review of the deployment of the IB program, ensuring that GT centers, including new ones you may build, are not separate and inherently unequal, making sure that the student rep to the school board is not always elected, with all respect, from Langley or TJ, two of our least diverse and most affluent schools. Admit that the issues of the divide are not just about socioeconomics but also about race and ethnicity. Plain and simple. And then figure out how to address those issues. Be honest and transparent about the achievement gap, and do not celebrate victories by providing aggregated numbers when you know that if you scratch the service, that the disaggregated numbers are shameful. Fund and implement programs that will close the gap, and for God's sake, do not retreat from third-grade reading. Third-grade reading is not about literacy. Third-grade reading is about readiness. It is about ensuring that you are on track for those children who will otherwise be caught on the wrong side of the divide. You must recognize that disparities in digital learning opportunities are real in this county and a potential civil rights violation. Promote bona fide parent engagement. Build a bench so that the school board can one day reflect the full diversity of the student body. Empower kids. At the end of the day, children figure out the path forward. If for whatever reason their parents are not able to help them, make sure that they are not in separate and unequal schools divided along the lines of haves and have-nots so that they can have a friend who will show them the way. Not much time left. Be bold, be brave. You've been that way already, but there's a really important mark for you all to leave, and we are counting on you to leave it. Thank you.
Ms. Sheree Brown Kaplan, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school board. My name is Sheree Brown Kaplan, and I'm Chair of the Fairfax Alliance for Appropriate Public Education. I am here to address Agenda Item 4.01, and specifically Belief Number 13, which currently cites the importance of reading proficiency by third grade. I was surprised to learn on Monday that you are moving forward with eliminating this reference. The rush to discard this important belief isn't valuing the issue or public input, and I request that you delay tonight's vote. Actually, my testimony may seem like déjà vu all over, like... Actually, my testimony may seem like deja vu all over, like Yogi Berra used to say, because it repeats the comments I made to you on May 10th, 2012, when I spoke on behalf of COTS as the Chair of the Reading Task Force. So I'm just attaching that. On June 7th of that year, you listened to your community advocates and adopted a belief that stated, "Reading proficiency by third grade is critical for the academic success of all students." I ask you to consider the following. There has been no public engagement on this specific proposal. The public cannot access board discussions at retreats or committee meetings. The issue was not specifically addressed at the work session cited. Two, the belief statements are clearly articulated goals to the public, and the reference to third-grade reading was included by the board in 2012 because the community asked for it. Three, reading cannot be considered too specific for a belief statement by the school board. Reading is a fundamental skill that students need to access their education and needs to be the school's job number one. Four, reading by third grade is not just a marker for student achievement, it's a major national focus in education. FCPS is a leader in our nation's public schools and should be a leader on the issue of reading proficiency as well. As noted during the 2012 debate, third grade is when a child goes from learning to read to reading to learn. I'm sure you remember me saying that many, many times. If reading proficiency isn't achieved by third grade, children will miss out on essential instruction because they cannot fully comprehend the material they're being taught. This means that children who aren't reading proficiently by third grade will need remediation and likely more costly special education services that, as research has shown, they will never exit. While FCPS cannot guarantee grade-level reading for every child, it must publicly commit to this essential skill for future student success. Please delay your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Mr. George Pasera.
Good evening, Dr. Garza, school board members. Happy New Year. I'd like to talk tonight about school board salaries. I know it's, guess you had planned on voting in two weeks, but maybe that won't occur. So I mean, my comments will be early. A couple of facts that most people know, but maybe the general public who's watching right now, who's going to be tuned in for Dr. Garza's budget presentation is here. Your salary right now is currently $20,000. Board of Supervisors, $75,000. They're going to $90,000. $2.6 billion budget. You guys get about more than half of it. If you ask the Board of Supervisors, you get about 70% of it, concurring all the state requirements and so forth. So whatever number you want to use, it's still more than 50%. What people think, maybe in the general public, that just PTA moms or dads, just advanced, it's not. I think I've seen it for many years now, what you guys do, in terms of your work you do, your hours you do, your commitments and so forth. What do you guys do? You hire the superintendent. To me, that's the most important thing. That's why I got involved when my daughter was like two years old and Dr. Dale was leaving. I think that's the number one important thing you guys do. And if parents don't know that, they better wake up. Other things you guys do, maybe increasing the salary might increase the diversity of your composition of this board. I'm not saying it will, but it might. Other things that it can do is, so what I'm trying to propose is, and I've said this for a year, year and a half now, is I'm definitely for the double increase. I'm more for it. I'm more for the $20,000 to $90,000 halfway in between. And if not, you're just going to add staff, which is going to cost more per year to do that. So either the way, if you're a taxpayer, I think you're going to pay more if you don't get an increase in salary. I can't, I love this time because you have potential candidates coming out. And I hear you all saying, I know some of the new ones, they didn't know the commitment full-time and all that. Well, you know, no offense, shame on you all if you didn't know the time commitments. But if potential candidates do not know this, please don't come in for the money, because it's a hard job. There's not one person around here whose lives aren't affected, marriage is affected, and I'm not saying suffering, because I'm using positives here. So if people don't know that, and people are listening, they need to wake up. You're not PTA moms and dads only. I can't educate the public on that. I also see the minimum salary paid for school board members as devaluation of our system of educational beliefs. $20,000 for a school board member, but it's about $46,000 for a beginning teacher in this county, if we're one of the richest in the country. In terms of things in the joint board, I've talked to many times, I know you guys are about to pass that with no problems. I'd like to see as budget time comes along with the joint on both sides of county and the schools, that there's no more PSA announcements, because it's a hard world out there, and I need concrete solutions. And also to wrap it up, as my new role, and I extended my hand to Mr. Plattenberg, and I've already talked to Dr. Garza about this months ago, and she was willing to do, is my new role as NWCP, Fairfax County Branch Chair. I want to talk about early start, early education, pre-K, and also Dr. Garza, who she's already accepted as Town Hall Forum. So I appreciate you guys' help for that, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of our speakers for coming out this evening. We appreciate your time. Next on the agenda is the FY16 proposed budget. And that's Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Latif, members of the community that are here with us tonight. It's my pleasure to present the proposed fiscal year 16 budget. Before I began, there were a number of individuals I feel compelled to acknowledge, certainly all of the members of our board who've spent countless hours. This is not the first time to begin talking about the budget. For those folks who've paid attention, we've had many, many work sessions. And honestly, after tonight, this is the beginning of the formal process, and it begins, continues in earnest around these dialogues and important decisions we make about how do we support providing the resources necessary to support student learning all throughout this system, which is our core mission. I would also like to especially thank our Board Budget Chair, Ms. Patty Reed, and our Vice Chair, Kathy Smith. They've put countless hours into providing us guidance and counsel as we work toward development of the proposed budget. Certainly appreciate their many hours and dedication. And then we are very fortunate that we have just outstanding and very skilled leadership on our team, representing, you know, Susan Quinn and Kristin Michaels and our entire financial services team. What a great, wonderful, what a wonderful group of people that we have behind the scenes that really support this work. And they work tirelessly to make sure that our school board members, our community, have answers on these important questions, because we are responsible and accountable for the stewardship of these precious taxpayer dollars. And so I know they take that very seriously. And then I'd just like to acknowledge our entire leadership team, who've been instrumental in the entire design of this budget. We're just very fortunate to have great people all throughout FCPS. So how did we approach the design of the fiscal year 16 budget? Now, as was pointed out earlier, you know, these are challenging times, and certainly always easy to develop a budget when resources are plenty, right? And those certainly are the easy times. It's very difficult when we approach these things when times are really tight. As we started the design of this, I think it's important, as we've, over the last couple of years since I've been here, a year and a half, we've continued to talk about the importance for our community to recognize that revenues have not kept pace with the expenditures and the needs of our system, and that's our reality. And we need to continue to help our community understand that this is not a sustainable model. And you ask any major business leader in any industry, maintaining greatness is almost virtually impossible in a constant mode of cutting and revenue reductions. So we have to keep that in mind as we move forward, the long-term impact of this continued approach to cutting and cutting and cutting. I'm concerned, I know I speak on behalf of the board, moving forward, it's certainly something that we're very concerned about. The other thing that we've done in terms of looking at how we've approached this budget, we've used almost looking to the past, looking to the future, and then really thinking about now. And it's really important for us to think about the past and the future, because they've provided a very important context for the design of the fiscal year 16 proposed budget. For an example, in light of the significant reductions taken over the last six years, FCPS has taken a targeted and strategic approach for how we would address this budget, protecting our essential core programs in our schools. And I'll elaborate on that more in just a moment. We know too that we continue to face significant fiscal challenges in the years ahead, specifically fiscal year 17 and beyond, and that we have been very mindful of what's happened to us in the past, which I'll talk about a little bit more in just a minute, but we're certainly also very mindful of what's going to happen in fiscal year 17 and ahead. And then finally, we're very concerned about our employee compensation. We are a people-intensive enterprise. We are great because we have great people. We have had historic success as a system because of the people throughout our system, and our future success is contingent upon our ability to keep and retain those great people and add a lot more great people to them. Compensation is a priority, and I think it's reflected clearly in this budget that I'll be presenting to you tonight. Stakeholder engagement, I will tell you, that's an ongoing process, and I think that we've strived, it's certainly been a priority of the board, the leadership team, this administration, to engage, inform. We own it, we've taken that seriously, we will continue to do that, and we've had lots of folks engaged, and we'll continue to do that. We stand ready to make sure that our community fully understands where our money's coming from, where, how are we spending it, and we believe that we should be held accountable, and we embrace that. There is a presentation outline, this presentation I'm giving tonight. In some cases, it's information you've seen before, but the reason it's included is because it's, this is a resource to our community. And so we do take it very seriously, making sure that we have included within this budget enough detail to really provide the community with answers to at least some of their questions, and there's a lot more information on our website, which I'll point out here in just a moment. One of my presentations today, I did not have a microphone, and there were 300 people in the room, and so I had to essentially yell my presentation, and so I'm a little hoarse, and I apologize for that. But I'm really glad to have a microphone tonight. It sure makes a difference. When I talked about how important the past has been in contemplating the fiscal year 16 budget, the past has been very painful for our system. As evidence of that, since fiscal year 2008, we've cut over $435 million out of our operating budget, which equates to, thank you, which includes more than 2,175 positions. Those are real cuts. In a little while, you'll find out that the budget I'm proposing includes an additional $55.4 million worth of reductions in operations. If you add all of that together in aggregate since fiscal year 2008, assuming adoption of this budget as it is, we will have cut almost a half a billion dollars out of operating costs since 2008. I think that's historic and significant. So if anyone says that we're not taking these decisions seriously and not doing our part to be as efficient as we possibly can, that's simply not the case at all. And you can go in any of our schools, ask any of our wonderful employees, they feel it, because they've been asked to do so much more with so many fewer people to do that work. This is set on top of a backdrop of growth at the same time of over 20,000 students. So those cuts, almost half a billion, occurred at the same time we were continuing to grow. And so that's important. You'll see also the budget reductions over time. You'll see in the next slide, last year was our most significant and most painful financial year that we've experienced in some time. In fact, in fiscal year 15 alone, we cut almost $100 million out of our operating budget, and we cut over 723 positions in one year. Almost a third of the cuts we've experienced since 2008. So we've been doing a lot of heavy lifting as it relates to how can we be very, very efficient and making sure that the dollars go as far as we possibly can and continue to keep our system great. We have continued to want to keep classrooms as our main priority. However, we have had to increase class size three times to balance this budget, and that's not missed by the school board and the leadership team. That's something that's been very, very difficult for us to do, but we've had no choice. We've taken and cut central office last year just 6%, and again, you'll see all the things that were adjusted in the budget last year to make that $100 million reduction in operation. As I pointed out, we're a very efficient system, and you don't have to take my word for it, there's lots of evidence of that. We have, first of all, if you look at just our cost per pupil, which I think is probably one of the best parameters, the best measures for contemplating how effective we are as a system, because it kind of levels the playing ground and it helps us compare to surrounding school systems. This first one just compares us to us, and it looks at if you adjust for inflation, I believe Ms. Hines and Mr. Storick have asked about this before, and it is significant, I think, important to our public. If you adjust for inflation, we're spending today still less than what we were spending in 2009. That's significant. Those dollars are not going as far as they were even in 2009. If you compare us to surroundings jurisdictions, you've seen a similar comparison. We kind of track about the middle of the pack there, and you might think, oh, the differences are not substantial, but they are on aggregate. For example, you'll see that Montgomery County Public Schools is just right ahead of us in terms of a dollar spent per student, and this means that they have more on aggregate for programming, teacher salaries, et cetera. But if we receive the same amount of money in terms of resource as Montgomery County does on aggregate, I'm getting ahead of myself, it's almost about 342 million dollars every year that we would have more than what we have right now to serve children. So it equates to very significant differences in dollar. And I will say that the return on investment, I'm very proud of the fact that we continue to outperform these surrounding school systems, school systems across the state of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and also throughout the nation. So while we're a very efficient system by every measure you can look at, I think we're getting a lot for our money, and I certainly think that's evidence of why so many people continue to want to move and have their children be served in our school systems, in our schools. Folks say, well, where are you spending the money? I will tell you that it is in classrooms and in schools. That's, and this is the best measure of that, when you look at how much we're spending on management, you'll see that we're the lowest by far of any surrounding school system, to the point I think this should be concerning to us, because as you reduce people, the work does not change, the work demands of any program, the federal programs, state programs, and we have to be concerned about a lot of that work and responsibility not shifting down to schools. And that can often happen if you cut so much in terms of support throughout the system. You'll see here that 93% of our positions are school-based. You know, oftentimes, people say that we have too many school-based positions, which is interesting. Either they say we have too many people at central office, which that's not the case here, or they'll say we have too many school-based positions that are not teachers. Having been a classroom teacher, I will tell you, classroom teachers value the librarian, the counselor, the nurse, the instructional assistants in the classroom, the principal. Every teacher wants a great principal and great leadership, great food service employees in the cafeteria that welcome children, great bus drivers. Every person throughout the system provides great support to our schools and to our teachers. We've had a number of financial audits. Those are independent audits. I won't go into all of those. I do think the State School Efficiency Review is something we need to continue to talk about. It was an independent state review. They spent almost- They spent almost a year in our system evaluating, looking for efficiencies. Sadly, they weren't able to find too many to help us. But we've implemented every, almost 98%. In fact, they've said that we implemented more than they've seen in any other school system, and we've accomplished every bit of savings that was possible from that work. And then finally, this has been a major priority of our school board, to the point that they've added an auditor general and are in the process of selecting a person for that particular position. And that is an independent position that does not report to the superintendent's office. And so, this is a major commitment that we're efficient and that we are accountable for those dollars. We have budget drivers that we've talked about for the last year and a half. It's important, I know you've seen these before, but it is important for our community to continue to see that we are continuing to be a fast-growing school system. We're now 10th in the nation. Just since 2011, we've grown by over 13,000 students. That's more than the total of Alexandria City Public Schools in total. So we've grown since 2011, an entire school system essentially. And that does put additional strain on our system. It's evidence of the fact that people want to come here, but it's also certainly an expenditure driver that we have to concern ourselves with. Another major expenditure driver is the differentiated costs associated with the special services that our students need. We don't think this is a problem, but it is a real issue in terms of making sure that our resources are there to support the varied needs of our students, our special education programming, our English for speakers of other languages, which I'll come back to, and then the number of free and reduced-priced meal students are continuing to grow. You've heard me talk about the number of schools within our system. Right now, I believe we have 47 or 49 schools that have 50% or greater free and reduced lunch. So we almost have a school system within a school system that looks very different than a lot of people think. We have 12 schools that have 70% or higher in terms of free and reduced lunch, and that is the measure for poverty that we use, it's a federal measure. That does have a bearing on the needs of the schools and the resources they need to support the learning of students. And I think another piece of the story that's not often told by just looking at the sheer numbers is going back to our ESOL services. We have not grown that much in terms of aggregate numbers. However, the shifting to Level 1 services has been very pronounced in this past year, meaning that students are coming into our schools that do not speak any English. That requires a more intensive staffing model. So you'll see here in the budget in just a little bit, we've actually had to add $4.1 million in our budget in terms of demographic drivers to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the increased number of students in Level 1 services. And you'll see that alone has been an increase of about 22%. You've seen the salary comparisons. We're not proud. We continue to slide toward the bottom of our comparison surrounding school systems. You know, I have people often say, well, it doesn't matter because you have so many people apply for jobs in your system every year. First of all, we assume that they're all qualified, which may not be the case, but we know there's a cost to turnover. And we know that our teachers and our employees in the system today are what makes our system great. So we have to be concerned about how we stack up the surrounding school systems. Any employer does that in the industry, looks at their competition to see how they stack up. We have to pay attention to this, and we've got to do better. We keep sliding in these comparisons. A new, and one that maybe many of our community have not seen, was a new study that was recent released out of the National Council of Teacher Quality. They looked at 125 larger systems across the United States and looked at the total lifetime earnings of teachers, and they adjusted those for inflation. And sadly, out of the 125 school system, we were ranked 98th. And it wasn't missed on a lot of our teachers. So we've got to be concerned about that because that's the value of the dollar that our teachers take home. Just to give you some context, Montgomery County was 56th in that same analysis. For those of you that are interested, it's available online, and a number of the surrounding school systems were included within that study. So we're concerned, we've got to do better. When I talked about looking back, we also have to look forward. In fiscal year 17, we are going to have some very significant budget drivers. In fact, we estimate that the projected deficit will be well in excess of $100 million next year. We cut almost $100 million out of our budget last year. It's my opinion that we don't have any more to cut. And so, we're going to employ this community, implore this community and our county leaders to get behind us because we will need their support and help in fiscal year 17 more than ever before. So as we look back and we look forward, it's important that we think about the challenges we have ahead. The growing population, we continue to grow, our salaries are lagging behind, we will have an additional 10% of the VRS increase that will be required. Last year, that was a part of the significant strain on our budget in fiscal year 15. It comes again, yet again. And then just limited revenue growth and the need to use one-time money to balance the budget, which is our structural deficit and has been talked about quite a bit. We're also concerned about what might happen to composite index. If there's an adjustment made there, it might, it is unlikely it'll be beneficial for our school system in terms of state funding. So we have to be thinking about fiscal year 17 as we think about the fiscal year 16 proposed budget. So we'll continue to constantly bring up fiscal year 17 as we continue the conversations on fiscal year 16. So let's get to the matter at hand tonight, and that is fiscal year, the proposed fiscal year 16 budget. Here is the overview. As was pointed out earlier, I believe, we're at a $2.6 billion operating budget. This budget will reflect a $64 million increase, which is about 2.6 over last year's budget. Key expenditure requirements, and I'll talk about all of these in much more depth here shortly, enrollment growth and demographic adjustments, compensation increases, full-day Mondays, later high school start times, and targeted elementary school class size relief. It also includes reductions of $55.4 million. So it's that continued shared approach about we've got to increase revenues to cover some of our priorities such as compensation adjustments and compensation benefits, compensation benefits. But we've also taken commensurate reductions wherever we could to make the budget balance. You'll see the expenditures by program. You'll see that over 85% of our expenditures are for the purpose of instruction. I'm also pleased to continue to point out that in such small amounts for general support, which is 4.4%, which is a very nominal, small percent of our budget. Here are the specific expenditure increases that are reflected in the proposed fiscal year 16 budget. For enrollment growth, $18.6 million. I will tell you that we recalibrate that number on an annual basis. So this is the real, these are the actual real cost of enrollment growth. And you can go back and look at previous proposed budgets and budgets in general, and you'll see that that dollar amount is different on an annual basis. It's been higher in previous years, and so that's been recalibrated. As I pointed out previously, that includes some demographic adjustments based upon additional services, program and services that students will need, including the $4.1 million that I mentioned earlier. The cost of full-day Mondays, which is $4.9 million as an expenditure, you'll see there's some commensurate offsetting reductions that bring that dollar on aggregate in terms of the total cost of $3 million here shortly. The county has included in their budget guidance that they would cover our real cost for full-day Mondays, and that'll be shown a little bit too. We've also provided a placeholder to provide relief in terms of elementary class sizes where we've been experiencing high-class, large class sizes in certain pocketed areas of our school system. This coupled with some monies that were placed in the mid-year budget review set aside for this purpose, will almost have $4 million in revenue to help us provide relief in schools where we've been challenged with significant class sizes. We have begun the process of developing a policy surrounding that, that I think the board will be very happy to see, and we'll be actually presenting that to you all for discussion later this month. We're engaging our principals and looking at our work, and hopefully by early February, mid-February, we'll have that policy in place so that our public can see how we plan to do things differently related to class size in the future. Additional expenditure increases, these reflective of a very pressing and significant priority for us, and that is to take care of our great employees. This budget does include a step increase for all qualifying employees. That's about 95% of our employees would qualify for the step. There are a few employees that are at longevity, and so they would not benefit from a step increase. But it is important for our employees. That's $39.7 million. This budget also includes a 1% market scale adjustment of $19.7 million. This would apply to all employees equally. This is very important in my view. The step increase is very important because it provides increased revenue and support to our employees. But the market scale adjustment is important because it's our only way of moving the scale. Without the market scale adjustments, our scales never move. And so, as we compare ourselves to surrounding jurisdictions, as was shown on an earlier slide, we just continue to move down to the bottom. That makes it very difficult for us to recruit and to retain teachers. They see, I can go to Alexandria, or I can go to some surrounding school systems, and that makes a difference to the money I'm taking home in my pocket. So we, both of these, I believe, are very important to helping us move forward, that priority of compensation. And I know that we were all disappointed that we could not even give a full step this fiscal year. In fact, next budget, the fiscal year 16 budget does include the $10.4 million that helps us cover the full cost of the step for the next year. It does include the VCRS retirement rate increase. That is, that is for employees who participate in the county's retirement system. It's largely our bus drivers and our food service employees. That rate is set by the county, and we are obligated to cover those costs. An additional expenditure increases, later high school start times, has already been adopted by the board, that is the same amount that was shared with the board at the time that that was approved, $4.9 million. We've included $3 million for vehicle equipment replacement. Of that $3 million, $2 million is for equipment replacement. And let me provide some context for that, which includes, by the way, upgrading or replacing our technology, our computers for our teachers and our students. So some context. If we had all of our computers on a five-year replacement cycle, we would need to budget $25 million every year to do that. So this only barely scratches the surface as it relates to our needs in terms of vehicle and equipment replacement. But over time, you know, those budgets have been cut and cut and cut, trying to protect the classrooms as much as possible. Contractual increases, those are adjustments required via contracts that are inflationary clauses such as our rental contracts, et cetera. And we're obligated to cover the cost of those increases by contract. We do have $1.5 million in the budget for school bus replacement. We have 381 buses of our fleet that are 15 years and older. So I don't have to tell you all, I know you drive vehicles. If you have a vehicle that's 15 years or older, it's very, very hard to maintain those. And I was very impressed with the room of principals today, only had two principals that held up their hand that their vehicle was 15 years older, because they just don't last that long anymore. We often, this is good to have it in the budget though, because it provides us ongoing revenue, and we do typically provide those increased buses on a lease purchase arrangement. In addition, the board did use some dollars in end-of-year last year to also purchase some buses, so I know it's definitely a concern for this board. With regard to previously approved expenditures that were one-time accelerations, this is new terminology, but it's mirroring the terminology that the county is using in terms of taking money that's one-time money and use it for one-time expenditures. And what that essentially does is the board approves that, it's put aside like in a little savings account, but it has to be reflected in this budget so that we can actually expend the dollars. So while it was previously approved by the board, it's an acceleration of a cost for the system, but it doesn't take out of the operating budget. It's already money that is there for one-time money. And that was the transportation public safety radios of $7.4 million. I know board members, and certainly we got sticker shock when we saw all of that, will tell you, it became painfully obvious on Tuesday that those systems need to be upgraded. So I want to thank you, school board, for supporting. Right now, our current systems for our transportation communication is analog system, and it made it very, very difficult to communicate with our buses this past Tuesday. So we're very grateful. This money's very much needed. You also allowed for us to set aside $800,000 to assist on a one-time basis next year in the budget for staffing reserve. I will tell you that the staffing reserve has been under significant strain, and we believe that this will help us next year, along with the $3.1 million, to see if we can balance our class sizes and address the needs that we have as a system. Staffing reserve is also tapped when we have additional students who need ESOL services, special education services, and we have to go to that staffing reserve for those needs as well. Ongoing requirements, you've already approved these. These were grant awards, auditor general position. We have to actually include the additional position in the budget, although money's already set aside for that. The grant awards were really categorical money in terms of federal dollars and federal programs. Okay, so what were the reductions? I've had people say, you know, in fact, I've had people come up to me, what positions are going to be cut? Dr. Garza, are our positions being cut? Are instructional coaches being cut? Or, you know, people are on edge about this. And I'm pleased to report that we have not included any cuts in positions. And I think it's important for our school community to understand, we are not cutting positions in this budget. We believe we have already put so much strain on our system as it relates to the workloads, the class loads, the caseloads that we are requiring of all of our systems. So this does not include any reductions in staffing. We did take a three-pronged approach. We will be conducting targeted reviews. This is reflected in the board's budget strategy document that was discussed on a number of different occasions earlier this fall. We are looking at potential savings and flexibility primarily around our federal programming from a zero-based budgeting approach, which I think is very important. Those are categorical funding, that's categorical funding and must be spent for the purposes for which it's designed. However, we need to make sure that it's being spent on division-wide priorities. For an example, we may be able to find additional dollars for additional pre-K classes with that, along that, with that effort underway. And certainly, we've been committed to additional education outreach throughout our community. Expenditure reductions, compensation-based savings, you all have seen this on an annual basis for some time. Whoops, I'm getting, hitting the trigger button. Compensation-based savings, I think, I'm proud of the fact that we recognize this and show this in our budget. Many organizations, they do not change their salary file, they just keep that money and roll it forward. roll it forward. We actually show the real savings that we experience on an annual basis and this is primarily due to turnover. So if we have a tenured, experienced teacher who retires, we place, we replace them with a beginning teacher, that offset or difference in salary, we actually recognize in savings. It's my understanding prior to 2008, we actually used compensation-based savings to fund salary increases on an annual basis. Since 2008, because budgets have been so tight, we've had to reflect those savings and use those for the overall budget itself, unfortunately. So I'm, but I'm pleased from a transparency perspective that we do put it in there and show it as a, as a real savings to our system. Health insurance, savings of 9.2 million. We did change our plan this past year and we've seen some migration of our employees from a more expensive option to a less costly option as they choose to do that. It does save, it does reduce our cost and so we've experienced some savings there. We're recognizing that. Other post-employment benefits, there have been some changes to Medicare Part D at the federal level primarily related to the prescription benefits. It doesn't negatively impact, impact retiring, retiree benefits, but that restructuring has saved us money. There've been also some changes at the state level related to retiree health and state life as, as such, we've experienced because we're obligated to pay those, it has saved us some money of 2.8 million. The contract length reductions is associated with our full-day Mondays and our change to our master calendar. It's aligning those contracts to the number of days we actually need folks to work. So that's the other part of that savings to the full-day Mondays that you saw on an earlier slide. And then everyone knows, or many people know about the division-wide organization, reorganization this past year and that did save us over $700,000. We've also, to balance the budget, because we were focused on making sure that we weren't affecting campus budgets, class size, department budgets, we're really protecting our core operations. We had to look at division-wide managed accounts. And so we've cut all of our utility type accounts down to as much as we possibly can. I will tell you, Board, these, these are very tight, but it is helping us that gas prices are, are lower and so we've recognized those savings throughout our system. Our legal fees and how much we're having to go outside for legal fees has been reduced, which I think is, is, is good and we'll continue to monitor that. And so we've made these additional reductions in this proposed budget to balance, to overall balance the budget. So to the tune of $55.4 million. I will tell you that this budget is not a true reflection of our needs. You could ask any one of our schools and principals, there are significant needs throughout our system and I don't have to tell this Board. They know, our community knows, we need to lower class size. We know that we have a wait list, as was pointed out earlier, we, we need to serve every qualifying child in pre-K at minimum. We've got student technology and connectivity challenges as also was pointed out in the portrait of a school, or school system. We know we have challenges there and many, many needs there. We are in the middle of developing a strategic plan and in order to keep our system a best-in-class system, we know that we have to continue to get better and continue to invest. We are very concerned that this budget has no, does not reflect any money for innovation in our strategic plan, but moving forward, it, we must have those dollars to meet the needs of children. As was also pointed out in the portrait of a school system, as we have talked about many times, access to career and technology education programs, you know, all those things that we know are needs require dollars to accomplish. And so we recognize that those needs are not, are real, but they're not reflected in this budget, nor have they been reflected in budgets over these last few years. Our infrastructure preventive and maintenance, preventive and major maintenance, I will tell you that we have over 20-something million dollars in backlog and that's conservative in major maintenance. We have, and I know the Board has, you know, we've gone back and forth, I think, over previous years and we've actually had to continue to cut preventive maintenance. Our replacement equipment buses and vehicles, we have an aging fleet, I've already talked about that. And we've got to increase the, the accessibility of our playgrounds all throughout the division. The needs are far greater than even those listed here. So this is a bare bones budget. With regard to revenue, you'll see that 70% of our dollars comes from the county. We realize that. And oftentimes I'll have folks say, well, let's just, we need to advocate to the state that we need more money from the state. Yes, we do. Yes, we do. And we are standing arm-in-arm with our county leadership. I know the School Board has adopted a resolution around state funding. I know the county is also looking at that as well. I think that's something that we're of like minds about, but that's a long-term solution. The reality is today and in the years ahead, it's still, the, the success and the needs of our system rest with our county leadership and that's just the reality of it. We certainly need to continue to advocate for a state share in educating our children here, but the reality is our life and, and the livelihoods of our children depend upon our county leadership. The revenue assumptions, we are continuing to use beginning balance to, to balance the budget. The good, the good news is, well, let me say the bad news. The bad news is the amount's going down significantly. In fact, just a few years ago, it was over 60-something million dollars. You'll see then that in this fiscal year, we use 48.5 million to balance the budget and that's not good because you're using savings, monies from, essentially from your savings account to balance your operating budget. That's, the bad news is the amount has been going down. The good news is, is we're kind of working ourselves out of needing those monies. So I, in the coming years, we may find ourselves in a position where we're no longer having to use one-time monies to, to balance the budget. So that's the good news. But it's also evidence of the fact that our budgets are getting tighter and tighter and tighter. Sales tax, we are showing an increase in sales tax. That's been a very positive trend. Federal aid is increasing only slightly. Other revenue of 1.2 million dollars is, you know, nominal, but it's tuition and just fees and dues and that kind of thing. Last year, everyone asked me, well, Karen, did you, where did you show the, the governor's, you know, additional dollars at that time from the state or not, that kind of thing? And it was a source of consternation for a lot of folks. So the revenue assumptions included within this budget already reflect the governor's budget of no cuts to kindergarten through great K-12 cuts. So just want you to know that we have adjusted the ask reflected in this budget. The ask of our county Board of Supervisors has been lowered as a result of what we've learned from regarding the governor's budget. So it includes 4.1 million more in state aid than we had originally projected. It updates the Virginia Retirement System employer rate and it reduces it, so that's good. And you'll see there that the request that will be in, asking of, in this budget for the, from the county has been lowered by 4.1 million dollars commensurately. Now, we know that that's the governor's budget. We still have to monitor what happens with the overall General Assembly and then at some point in the near future, we'll have to make those final adjustments as this process You'll see the state aid, it gets complicated, but essentially this is reflective of comparing one fiscal year to the next. We did experience some reductions in state aid last year, largely having to do with, if you remember, at one time we were expecting additional dollars for teacher salary increases and those did not materialize. And so this is showing a difference because we're having to compare one fiscal year to the other fiscal year. And I, I always like to look at Kristen, she shakes her head if I got that right in terms of, of the description. You'll see the county transfer increase request. Initially, we were proposing 74.7 million dollars in, in additional revenue. We've actually reduced it to 70.6 as a result of what we learned from the governor's budget release. You'll see that the county transfer increase as reflected in what's needed in the proposed fiscal year 16 budget is 3.99%, right at, at 4%. And I'll come back to that in just a minute. You'll see here state aid over time and you'll see since 2011, this is across the state to 2016. What's interesting about that is if you compare to 2007 and what's, what's proposed this year in 2016, I will tell you, we get about a little over 20% of our money from the state. Other jurisdictions across the Commonwealth get approximately 45% of their revenue from the state. So it is a real issue that we need to address moving forward. Again, as I pointed out earlier, we've taken a shared approach to expenditure reductions along with requested increases in funding and those reductions, as I pointed out earlier. Let me go to the county transfer increase request. I, I will tell you, I believe that this budget is very prudent. I think it's very conservative and I think it's certainly cognizant of where we've been, what we think's ahead in fiscal year 17. In light of that, I know that the county is anticipating significant, a significant shortfall in county revenue. I will tell you that we've kept as close to budget guidance as we possibly could. The budget guidance was 3% plus the cost of full-day Mondays, which is 3.2% increase to the transfer. You'll see that we have gone above that guidance by $14 million or what is .79. So I will tell you that I think it's the, the closest in our history we've ever been to the budget guidance. And so I hope it's acknowledged by the county. We've been thoughtful about this process. We've been very pragmatic, but at the same time, as such, we need this budget fully funded. There is no fluff in this budget and so we, we need them to fully fund the budget. And I think we've been very responsible having stayed as close to the budget guidance as we possibly could. In summary, again, $64 million, 2.6% increase in revenue. You'll see the, where we focused the increased expenditures around division priorities. We've taken reductions protecting the classroom and protecting our system as a whole. We've, we're cut weary and we're concerned about the long-term effect of those cuts on our system. We need a long-term, sustainable approach, as, has been advocated by our School Board. We need for the long-term financial planning of the county to include evidence of our real needs as a system and not just a placeholder. That has been communicated, I think, quite well by this School Board. That needs to continue. There are very real needs. We have a system that, as a system that can be quantified and projected and so we ask that our real needs be reflected in their long-term planning. And then finally, I will acknowledge that I believe that we have to acknowledge the historic investment of time on the, on the, on the part of the Board of Supervisors in working with us as a system. I will tell you, this Board with the Joint Budget Development Committee and the Infrastructure Finance Committee before that, I believe, at least it's my, in my view, we have a stronger, better partnership and collaborative spirit around those conversations than ever before. And I know I speak on behalf of the Board that we are grateful for those improved relations and we ask that we, that they work with us as we continue to champion for the needs of our school system and to make sure that our system and our schools remain the best schools in the United States. There are important dates. Tonight marks only the beginning of the formal process and so we encourage our community to get involved. There'll be many more work sessions, many more public meetings, but I know that we all stand ready to hear from our community. We certainly want them to stand behind us. We encourage their engagement as we move forward. And then finally, I would just say, I want to thank this community, our staff, our wonderful employees all throughout the system, our parents, certainly our School Board and our county leadership for their continued support of our great school system. I know our schools are a valued community asset and I hear that everywhere I go. This is a very pragmatic budget and I encourage our community to get behind us in support of this request and we urge our County Board of Supervisors to fully fund, to fully fund this request. And I thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, for this opportunity to present the proposed fiscal year 16 budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garza. Well done. My colleagues, I'll remind you that we do have a work session on this coming up and next Monday, but I will anticipate some questions. So, Dr. Garza, you can answer those from your seat right there. And my first question comes from Mr. Stork.
Well, thank, thank you very much and, and I, I deeply appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this because I know, I know particularly over the last three or four weeks when you're really bringing things together, it's, it's difficult because you're making tough choices and, and I can see once again, you've made some very tough choices and I respect that. Not always happy about it, but, but recognize the, the nature of our situation, which is we have to balance our budget. We don't get, have control over the amount of funding that we receive, but yet we recognize the needs that we have are, are far greater than, than the resources available to us. So I, I think you've made some great trade-offs in here in the sense of, I think you've balanced it as best you can, but I, I do hope that we can fully fund it because I don't see, I don't see where else we go with this. And I hear all the time that we cannot continue the path that we're on and I know we all recognize that and I just, I just hope the public is better understanding of that because then they're the ones who get to decide whether or not we've used their money wisely and in turn that the funds that we're provided are sufficient to truly educate the children of Fairfax County and that is ultimately our objective. The Joint Budget Development Committee, which you referenced and, and in particular, we worked on trying to get common language, which would help the public to understand how the two, how these pieces fit together and, and I think that will help us in, in having those conversations. I know that we had some shorter-term objectives, which, which again, to get the common language, but also to look at ways that we could save and smart savings, smart services, opportunities. I know we'll continue to do that and I, again, deeply appreciate of their involvement. And I look at some of those things coming together over the next year or two. I know some of them are longer term. And then I, I recognize that, that we have to find some other ways to increase the sources of revenue. You know, the property tax, which represents 65% of, of how the Board of Supervisors funds, you know, their, our county services is, really is onerous. There needs to be other ways to do that, but we recognize without the state's willingness to step up, our state legislators and, and others wants to step up and change the antiquated system that we have now is, it's going to be difficult to do that. We know that our, our friends across the border that you referenced earlier, their budget essentially is the same as ours and they have about 30,000 fewer students to educate. So you can look at it that way as well. So, and they have options there to, to raise funds through, I think, what is a much more fairer way, which is through an income tax. So they have some way of balancing, not just putting it all on the shoulders of the property tax holders, but, but, but income, which also, which we're obviously clearly taxed here, but all that money goes down the state. They get, for every dollar, they get, we get about 20 cents back. So we know that that's not a fair system for folks of Fairfax County. And finally, I wanted to just really point out that we have an objective here that this Joint Budget Development Committee identified and I know the Board is very supportive of, is we need to come together not only as Boards, the Joint, the Board of Supervisors and ourselves, we need to identify some broader priorities and, and truly goals that we have as a community for what we are doing and how we're going to do it and educating our, our children. And educating our children, and frankly, protecting our future, which is what that means, it's essential that we, in fact, do set some broader goals. We do get together, and for, I think, a day-long retreat, that's what we've talked about. I'd like to see that happen in June or July, when we really have an opportunity to look at the future and really identify among ourselves, and in turn, take the election year that's coming up in November and educate the public. Here are the choices that we're making. Here are the opportunities. You know, we need your input in this process, and I think it's a way of doing that. Our teachers have, frankly, we've carried our system on the back of our fabulous teachers and administrators, and we've done that too long. This budget goes a little bit towards doing that. I know our motion last year, when we approved the budget, said, please, we want to make sure step increases in full. I'm very pleased you did that. I know it was almost impossible to do, but we're there. And now let's see if we can realize this as we go down the last few months and approve a final budget. So thank you very much, Dr. Garza. Thank you very much for your team as well.
Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Dr. Garza, and staff. I think that you have done a masterful job of putting this together. First of all, I'm very pleased to hear that you've been zero-basing those categories in the budget, particularly where we have categorical funding, to make sure that we are using it in the best way possible for children, that we're not duplicating something, but that we are looking very closely at that. I really appreciate that. I'm also pleased to see the increased funding and the reserves set aside for the larger class sizes. I have schools that are in that category. We set aside funding for the 15 budget, which is this year. I know there was a concern when we passed that, were we putting enough money in? And we were not. So I'm very pleased to hear that you've put it in, and I know that you are working on a formula that will help, again, make sure that the resources are spent in the best way possible. So I appreciate that. I've been at a couple of large meetings lately, and I very much appreciate Chairman of the Board of Supervisors Sharon Bulova talking about how education is the number-one priority in the county. She gave a very stirring speech last week, where she said that the quality of public schools in Fairfax County sits at the top of the pyramid, and that everything else will flow from that. That is what attracts business. That is what is appealing to our entire community. It is what the citizens of Fairfax County want and need for the quality of life that they are looking for. So I very much appreciated that speech, and I think it was heartfelt. So I certainly hope that they appreciate how hard you all have worked to be efficient, to be effective, and at the same time, meet the real needs of our school system. And you're right, we did ask last year, as Mr. Stork said, paying our teachers has got to be the number-one priority in this budget. We cannot watch us continue to sink. We know that our investment, particularly in our young teachers when they come in, it takes five, six years to learn to become a really good teacher. I've been there. I've done that, and I learned I'm not a good teacher. I have great respect for those who have stayed in the classroom. It is a tough, tough job. We invest in those young people. They may come, they may be idealistic, they may be passionate. Very few, out of the gate, are fabulous in any profession. It takes time and dedication. We need to be able to attract the best people in that pool, and then we need to be able to get them to stay as long as possible, for them to be outstanding in the classroom. So when some people say, well, if they stay a year or two, it's fine, let them go. No, that is a waste of their talent, their time, and most of all, it's a waste of our dollars, and it short-changes our children. So we have got to be able to pick from the top of the pool, and then we have to get those people to stay. We look at all the international studies. We look at Singapore. We look at Shanghai. We look at South Korea. We look at Finland. I sat next to the ambassador of Finland at a party over the holidays. That was fascinating. They know how to get good people and how to get them to stay. Good support, pick well, and then pay them a living wage, so they can stay and provide for their families. So it's very important that we do that. So again, thank you very much. I think you've done a great job. My only question is, I'm assuming now, with the 40 positions that you've put in here technically for reserve for class sizes, to keep them at a reasonable level, and we've already set aside money for, I believe it's 10 more positions, so we really have 40-plus positions, should we need them. And I'm hoping that that will truly cover the ground and keep us below 30, because that really is where we need to be. Is that correct?
That is correct. And in fact, in January, I think it's later in the month, I think it's 28th or something like that, we've actually put aside some time to walk through some of the new designs around how that would actually, the mechanics of the new policy. And it's going to be very specific, because we think it's time for us to be able to be very clear about what our standard is, and so that people don't worry and have suspicions about how these dollars are allocated and how these resources are allocated. So I think you'll be pleased, and so in the coming weeks, you'll see that.
Great, thank you, because the range is important. Class size does count. And even children who don't have huge challenges, there still has to be a reasonable size for both the children and the teachers to be successful. So I really appreciate, I think you've heard a lot of the things that we've asked for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Heinz.
So I have a question and then some thoughts. On Slide 42, the summary of the budget, I just thought it might help for the public to just explain a little bit more about the two different numbers in terms of the overall budget's increasing, it's saying $64 million, but then it says our county transfer request is increasing by 70.6 million. So I thought it might be helpful to just explain, how can the overall budget grow by 64, but what we're asking for in funding is actually larger than that?
Because it has to do with the reductions in the system as well. So you have to look at both sides of the ledger and bring them down to determine how much we need to balance that budget. And so while the overall operating budget has increased by 2.6 percent, expenditures by 64 percent, we need an additional 70.6 to actually balance the budget. And most of that has to do with compensation increases that we've had in the system. So it has to do with how do we balance the budget? And Kristin, you may want to help me explain that. I don't know that I explained it very well.
Sure. While we're asking for an increase in funding from the county, the reason our overall budget increases lower is because we have a shortfall in other revenue categories. So the most significant that you saw is our beginning balance funding is decreasing by over $20 million. So when you take all of the different revenue components together, the reason the county transfer increase is higher than the overall budget increase is due to that reduction in other revenue, primarily from the beginning balance funding.
I just thought, if I'm looking at it funny, there might be other people in the audience at home looking at it.
And Ms. McLaughlin, we typically provide you that one-page document that shows all the revenue and then expenditures on one page. For the purposes of this presentation, you know, we have to break it down in some way to make it work in terms of a PowerPoint. But we will have that one-pager, and I think it makes it a little bit more clear, the question that you ask. And so that will be provided.
Great.
And I failed to go to the very last slide in the presentation, but a lot of these resources, there's a lot more information on our website, and I would encourage the public to go there. And that's where they would find that one-pager.
So in terms of just my initial thoughts, because I know, as Chairman Kovacs noted, we're going to have, hopefully, several work sessions to talk about this, but my initial reaction is that I am very, very excited by what I see here. First of all, this is now going into the fourth budget, for those of us who joined the board in January of 2012. And for the first time, borrowing from my colleague, Mr. Velkoff, I feel like we're finally playing bridge and not poker. And I really think that this has put us on our best footing ever as a school board, to go before our Board of Supervisors and, quite frankly, our county executive and say, okay, we understand what you have forecasted for the county, and what you told us, your initial assessments are of what you can give us. And I think that the ask, the increase of 3.99 percent versus 3 percent, is not only reasonable, it's absolutely essential. And I just want to share with the public something that I said in November, when the two boards met for the initial budget forecast. And the bottom line is, we are one county. We are one county that serves every single resident here in Fairfax. And what was forecasted for us is that on the county side, the county executive has calculated what they can do to raise compensation for their employees up to 4 percent is the rough estimate. And what I asked the county executive in that meeting was, did you also calculate for the other half of the employees or more? We know it's actually more than half the employees. But for the school system side of the employees, they're county employees, they're compensated by the tax dollars of Fairfax County. And if we're all one county, and every employee serves every resident here, then what we compensate for our county employees needs to also be done for our school employees. And I think that is the thing that I look forward to, getting more information from our Board of Supervisors and our county executive, because looking at this 3.99 percent increase, what it is saying is, they may have forecasted 3 percent on what random number, I don't know. But the bottom line is, when they decided they want to give an increase of almost 4 percent to their employees, they absolutely need to calculate what is going to be the cost differential on the school side. And then how that increases, that 3 percent that they initially felt would be reasonable to give us, that's where they need to do some recalculating. And that's what I'm going to look forward to talking to with my colleagues, and how can we best tee that up? I know we want this spirit of collaboration and camaraderie, and the Joint Budget Development Committee is all with that. But this is the now. You know, the Joint Budget Development Committee has some sort of, here's where we want to go moving forward. But we've got to figure this one out now, in the next three to four months with our supervisors. And I hope that my colleagues will, you know, share my excitement and enthusiasm for really helping our Board of Supervisors and our county executive understand that what compensation they do for their employees, we must be able to deliver the same for ours. Having that equity and parity in compensation, starting now, and in my mind, every year going forward, is probably one of the best ways that we can have one county and serve all of our citizens.
Next, Ms. Heinz, followed by Ms. Schultz and Ms. Evans.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I just wanted to follow up a little bit with Ms. McLaughlin there. I remember you asking that question, and I was in the room, and I was, well, just a little disappointed in the county executive's response, which seemed to be pretty much, well, look at slides such and such, the money's not there, you know? And that can't continue to be the response, obviously. And I think that was the point of the Joint Budget Development Committee, and we're going to talk about their work in a little bit. But that revenue side of the conversation has to also happen as a collaborative conversation. So anyway, I thank you, everybody, very much for this budget. I am very pleased to see the extra money for class size. You know, that's been a big issue for folks in Hunter Mill District, for sure. And I really appreciate, Dr. Garza, your willingness to stand up in the community meeting, the listening tour that you have, and say, we will fix class size. I mean, that's not something I can say, you know, but that's something you can say, and I was very grateful to you. And so I just want to make sure I understand, when it's called a placeholder, what does that mean exactly? I mean, the money is definitely there, but...
That provides us the money as we begin to execute this new regulation, essentially policy that we're going to be sharing with you, so that we have those resources. I believe largely, it would go into staffing reserve, if not into the actual staffing allocation. So it would be probably a combination of both, wherever those needs exist. But we'll be able to, we've got to have that as a cushion as we implement a new policy. And as we put out there, this is our specific cap, hard and fast cap. We need to be able to fund that and provide those resources. So it could be a combination of either through the regular budget, through staffing early on, or if it's after school year starts, having it in the staffing reserve.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands, it's money that will be there to solve this problem. There's nothing different about that money. Yeah, good. We're just kind of waiting to, and we will soon know what the plan is for that, and then as it rolls out, we'll be able to watch it. I think that, I feel like this is, even though it's a very tough budget, you know, because we're still in very tough times, I feel like this is a budget that the community can rally around. I think our employees can rally around it. I think, you know, I think parents can, parents who've been worried about class size and about all the ways that, you know, our tough budget times have been hitting tipping points in the county over the last couple of years. I think, you know, I'm hopeful that this is the sort of thing that everybody can get behind and make clear to our funders, that this is minimal funding of our needs, and that we really need for it to happen. You know, it's one of those things, when you vote at budget time to increase average class size by a half a student, and, you know, it seems so abstract at the time that you're voting on it, but then the reality, over three of those cuts, just comes calling in the classroom, and it did this fall in a lot of places throughout the county, it's not just Hunter Mill. And we really have to respond to that. I mean, it's, you know, we don't want the school system to become a place where there are a lot of schools where people just don't feel like their children are getting the attention that they need, where the quality of instruction could suffer, simply because of the numbers of kids that are in each room. So it's a very important part of this budget. I'm so glad that it's in there. I wanted to ask just one more question. When we talk about longevity employees, this is a question that I've had, and there's a sense we have that we're not able to do as much as we want to for our longevity employees, but I wonder if you could just kind of explain who they are and what the issue is in terms of their compensation, why they miss out on it?
Our scales, and you all know that we're beginning this year a compensation study. We think it's time to really look at our scales, make sure they're competitive, make sure that as we look, you know, we've had some challenges with some of our scales being either too compressed or spread out too much. And so we feel like it's time for us to look at the way in which we, our current scales are designed and how it's affecting us. We do have a lot of steps in our current system, up to 25, isn't it? Or 30? Up to 30? Up to 30? So once an individual's had the benefit of those 30 steps, they're essentially capped out at the maximum salaries for us. Now, you know, I hear from folks like last year who didn't get, they were capped out at longevity. But what I always say is, but we have a lot of employees throughout our system, you've essentially had the benefit of those steps every year, plus, in many cases, a market scale adjustment in recent past. We have newer employees who haven't had the benefit on an annual basis of those steps. And so people get that. But I think with the market scale adjustment associated with this too, I think that goes a long way with those individuals who would not benefit from the step.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. And as we look at the chart that compares us to other, you know, regional districts, we are doing the worst, I think, in that category. And so I can understand folks who are at the top feeling like, you know, they're being left behind after a lifetime of service to the county, you know? So I agree. I think the market scale adjustment will help. And I'll continue to talk about this with those employees and see, you know, how they feel about it.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I just want to start by thanking Dr. Garza and Kristin Michaels and the entire budget team. This is quite an impressive accomplishment. And I think it's important that our funders in particular and the public understand how difficult this was to get everything into a 3.99 percent increase, particularly when you have accomplished, been able to fund through this, our top priorities, this board's top priorities, and of course, in particular, the teacher pay. That absolutely, we have got to get that teacher pay up. I'm delighted to see that we have a step and a pay raise. I continue to be particularly concerned about the piece in there with the mid-career. You know, that has gone down, and those are our seasoned professionals, of course, our new people and our veterans, they are so critically important as well. But the fact that that mid-career has gone down to, I think, third from the bottom, you know, I think that that is going to take particular attention. So I hope when we do this review, that we pay particular attention to that. And of course, overall, we want to get our teacher pay up substantially over the course of years. I think it is critical for... I think it is critical for our public to know as well about and focus on the uncontrollables. And it's in here, and I think we need to continue to get the message out. We have so many more kids now, and we have so many needier kids now. This is not the Fairfax County of 20 years ago or even 10 years ago. And we need to address those needs, as well as higher bills that keep coming in from the state, in particular VRS. People don't see VRS, but we have to pay it. Last year, the increase was $37 million more for that, and that's going to continue to rise. So I think that's a message we need to keep getting out as well. I agree with those that have said this is something we can stand behind. I hope we rally the, as Ms. Hines said, the parents, students, employees behind this, because it's important that our funders understand how each of these pieces is of critical importance. I agree that class size is important. That's important in all of our districts, even in some of our neediest schools. We've seen class sizes that have gone over 30 in certain circumstances, that they have gotten out of whack with where we want to be. At the same time, it's important to me, and I think to this entire board, that we retain our commitment to needs-based staffing. That's been a longtime commitment to make sure that we provide resources where they're needed for our neediest kids with, and particularly our special needs children as well. So I was very glad to see that there were no more cuts in that area. So with that, I don't have any particular questions tonight. I wanted to make those points, and I know what our work session, I'll have more, you know, look more in detail. But I mainly just wanted to congratulate you all on a great job. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
Well, thank you, Dr. Garza. I know this has been a long haul, almost really a two-year process to kind of get to this, or from the day that you walked through the door. I do want to, while I don't have specific questions, I do want to go and highlight something, because a number of my colleagues have already brought it up. And it's the question, you know, Ms. Strauss brought up about class size counts and that we need to have reasonable class sizes. My colleague has just brought this up as well. And my concern is that we not have a false narrative. And I know that you indicated, to some degree, that we have a presentation coming later in the month. And that's like, you know, showing us a picture of, you know, a hot-out-of-the-oven, you know, turkey, and it's Thanksgiving Day, and you're telling me that we've got to wait another month, or later in the month. So, you know, you've whetted the, you know, the data appetite with that nugget, and that's certainly something that, you know, at least some of us have been talking about, because class size doesn't just include the ceiling, it includes a floor. And we have, an elementary student alone, 1,026 classrooms that have 20 or fewer students, representing 17,749 students. We have 825 classrooms that have 19 or fewer students, representing 13,729 students. We have 587 classrooms of 18 and under students, representing 9,207 students. We have 399 classrooms with 17 or fewer students, representing 5,823 students. We have 257 classrooms that have 16 or fewer students, representing 3,409 students. We have 160 classrooms that have 15 or fewer students, representing 1,857 students. We have 97 classrooms, which have 14 or fewer students, representing 912 students. We have 67 classrooms, which have 13 or fewer students, representing 492 students. A dozen or fewer students, 53 classrooms, representing 310 students. 42 classrooms with 11 or fewer, with 178 students represented, and so on. And some of the smaller ones, you know, down in the ones and twos and fives, represent, you know, self-contained classrooms. The notion that we are meeting ed specs and that we're talking about major capital investments, because we're in between the squeeze play of the operational needs with things like, you know, staffing reserve and how to meet the needs of the students, when some of my colleagues are talking about needs-based staffing, and the capital, the urgent, urgent capital needs that are coming. I mean, they're already here, but they're coming. But the meshing of the understanding of this board and the taxpayers, of how to most efficiently and effectively be stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, that we cannot only be talking about, well, you know, the average class size. Well, when you have, in a division of our size, 1,026 classrooms, which have 20 or fewer students, you are dragging down the average across the division. And it's, that's the straw man that has got to be had, discussion's got to be had by this board. And I'm hoping, I mean, I know I'm trying to peek at the Christmas present early, and I don't expect you to necessarily, you know, delve into this, because I know it's coming. And so I'll sit patiently. But this conversation has to be had, because if we start to meet education specs and say, you know what, classroom sizes do matter. And if we went to, you know, a standard of, instead of having, you know, gee, tens of thousands of students at 20 and below, what if we said, you know what, we're going to put that at 22, and only where profoundly needed are we going to have class sizes of 11, 12, 13, 14? That is not, for me, an effective way for us to meet the needs, whether it's in the Route 1 corridor for Mr. Stork, or, you know, Ms. Evans, you've got difficulties for a number of yours. When I'm facing, you know, parents on a regular basis, you know, who have 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, you know, that's a parity issue that needs to be a part of the discussion. So I'm putting it out there, I know there's much more to discuss, but that is a, the time has come that that become a fundamental part of our discussion.
Ms. Schultz, I think you'll be pleased to see also, we did address minimums in this process too. So just sit tight. Don't shake the Christmas present too hard.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Dr. Garza, and to staff for, and as well as Ms. Smith, for working behind the scenes very hard to put together what I think is a very reasonable budget, given the circumstances that we're in. And tonight, really, this is just the beginning of this phase of the process, as we all know. So I will be brief. This does reflect our board's top priority of employee compensation. It reflects the board of supervisors and the county executive's budget guidance, and strengthens our partnership, I believe. It is very tight, though, and it's not one of those budgets that has something for everyone, I don't think. You know, there are people on this board might have areas of interest, but I don't think that this is the time to be pondering other areas of interest. I think that next year, as we know, it'll be even worse. And that'll be the time for us to sit down with the board of supervisors and really talk about the services that we provide as a county and the revenues that we have to do that work. But, so I asked my colleagues if you would keep in mind where we are in the process and realize that we've all worked very hard to get to this point, this budget is very tight. But I do feel that it's very realistic, and I encourage you to work as a team with the rest of us here and try to put forward a good, solid budget with a couple of talking points that everybody can clearly understand. I think sometimes when we try to put out so much information, people get confused and they get lost. And I think there's a couple of key messages here that Dr. Garza has highlighted, and I feel like we should also do the same thing. So I'm hopeful that we can all stay on the same team here as we go forward and work on this budget between now and May. Thank you. And I'll see you 3:30 on Monday for our budget work session.
Thank you. I'm Ms. Smith.
I appreciate your comments, Mrs. Reed. I do think it's a good budget for where we are. I think that the board has talked about employee compensation for a while, and I think that's the important piece of this budget. And I don't think we can lose sight of the fact that we are still cutting $55.4 million. I'm happy that most of it's in central managed accounts and areas like that, but as Mrs. Reed said, it is a very tight budget, but it's focused on our main priority of providing employee compensation. I want to talk about the budget process a little bit, because we're just starting, but people have to have dates in mind now. So we'll have our work session Monday, we have another work session at the end of the month, and then on February 5, we're going to vote on the budget, and it will become our advertised budget. But the date that always gets lost in this process is an action of the board of supervisors. March 3, the board of supervisors will set the advertised tax rate. And that's a really important part of the process, because whatever they set that tax rate at, when they finally vote on their budget in April, they can go lower, but they can't go higher, and a penny on the tax rate is probably a little over $20 million. So that is significant to what happens to the school system budget. So the public right now needs to be prepared, to get educated, so that they can speak to the board of supervisors about where that tax rate gets set before the March 3 date. The county executive will come out with his budget on February 17. He will suggest a tax rate to the board of supervisors, but the community needs to be involved in that decision. And that's a crucial piece that will influence where we end up. So I urge us all to help educate our communities about that. But thank you. I do think it's a good budget. It's bare bones, but a good budget. Thank you.
Mr. Velkoff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of brief questions. One has to do with the National Council of Teacher Quality, that was Slide 17. And then I also will have a question about the later high school start times and the impact on the budget. So the NCTS, TQ, sorry, I found that most interesting. Does that, is that salary only, or does that also take into account compensation benefits and so forth?
It is salary only, it doesn't look at benefits. And the reason they did not do that is because it would be very difficult to compare, because the benefit packages, whether it be health insurance or retirement, is so different from state to state and from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. So it only looked at salary.
Okay, very good. I think down the road, I may have some thoughts or questions along these lines, but, and it's also triggering, you know, for our strategic plan. Perhaps there is a goal in here somewhere that, you know, maybe we end up in the top third or the top quarter, or something, you know, a range where we would like to end up. Okay. On the later high school start times, we listed the cost at $4.9 million. And I, as I recall, the total cost is about $7.5 million, and I believe that we invested a couple million dollars, I think, at year-end. Am I correct about that? Right, so the investment this year is 4.9, but the entire initiative, because we prepaid about a couple million dollars. I just want to make sure I'm right about this.
Yes, the entire initiative that the board voted on was 5.4 million, and the board purchased 20 buses at year-end, which reduces the cost, the ongoing cost.
Oh, it was 5.4, okay.
Correct.
Okay. I was asking, actually, because there was a news story about Montgomery County and the challenge that they're going to face, and I was just thinking that it was a little bit more than 4.9. And then finally...
Just to add one more thing to that, though?
Sure.
The 4.9 is the ongoing cost. So it would remain in our budget as ongoing cost. Is that correct?
That is correct. Majority of the cost is for bus drivers and fuel.
Okay, great. And Ms. McLaughlin, I was touched that you remembered my remarks of three years ago. So, Dr. Garza, I really appreciate the robust one-spade bid, and I look forward to the day when we hear two clubs.
Oh, my. Mr. Moon?
I just have a couple of brief questions, Superintendent. That 40 positions, which you have included in your budget to address elementary class size, would you be able to tell us on Monday where you came up with the 40, what it's based there on, is that? We have about 140 elementary schools...
It's about what we could afford, Mr. Moon.
All right. Okay.
It's about what we could afford, and we do believe that's sufficient, and coupled with what's currently existing in our staffing reserve, to meet the need of this new policy that we're going to be proposing to you all.
Okay, the next question that I have, the last one, is, as you took reductions from centrally controlled accounts, if you didn't take those reductions, the money from those accounts would have otherwise gone into the beginning balance for the FY 2017. So which means that you took some reductions from the centrally controlled accounts, the beginning balance for the FY 2017 is expected to be probably much less than what you have for FY 16. Is that a field assumption?
So you're projecting, you're asking, will our beginning balance for fiscal year 17 be lower than it is for fiscal year in this proposed 16 budget? If the trend continues, I would say the answer to that is yes, because as we've tightened and tightened budgets, we've had less money at year-end, as you all know. So I think the answer to that is yes. We believe in the next few years, we'll work ourselves out of having to use beginning balance at all to budget, to balance the budget. I hope I answered your question, Mr. Moon.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, I have a go back from Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, real quick, Ms. Michael, when I was doing some back-of-the-envelope calculations, again, going back to what's fair is fair on compensation, and I added it up, and it looks like between the step and the market rate increase, and then our full-day Mondays, it's about $68 million, just right there. And it's noted here that we're looking at needing 3.99%, which is 70.6 million. What's actually the 3% that the county, in dollars, that the county executive was saying you need to think about your transfer increase being? In other words, I think the differential, it's not that we're asking them to go find 70 million more, they already forecasted. So what is that dollar number?
Correct. We asked them for $14 million more than their budget guidance.
Right. So, again, for the people at home, it's a $14 million differential, so that's the 54 million is what they originally were going to give us.
They were originally going to give us $52 million.
52? Plus, right, plus, I was counting Monday already in there. So my point to my colleagues is, if you're looking at that they already knew and are planning right now, about 54 million, I think this is the time that we get to finally partner with our board supervisors to have said, you know, if you need additional monies, A, be reasonable, and B, help us understand why. Well, if we want equity and fairness, they're going to give an increase in compensation to their employees. In order for us to do it, we're going to need the extra 14 million. So it's really not as if we decided it'd be fun to spend 14 million more dollars. We just want to be able to do for the county employees that serve the school system, just like they're doing something for their county employees. So I wanted to really drive home that point, because I think it once again highlights what incredible footing you've put us on in this request, because I cannot imagine how anyone on the board of supervisors can look at this request and the differential and say no, especially if you're telling us that they recognize the school system is one of the most important things we do here in Fairfax County.
Mr. Moon, for a go back.
Yeah, could I ask just one follow-up question to Christine? That our step, is that about 2.5, 6%?
That's correct, it's 2.5%.
So that plus 1% market scale... So that plus 1% market scale adjustment, total is about 3.5% or 6%, which is less than what the county is proposing to do for their employees.
Correct.
All right, my colleagues. Thank you. Dr. Garza, you have one more comment.
I have one last final comment. Many of you commented on how this is a bare-bones budget. I said it's a very pragmatic budget. I think we're very responsible in what we're putting forward, but at the same time, I'm also very mindful of the fact that we didn't inflate so we could come back. If, in fact, this budget is not fully funded, when we present a bare-bones budget, we have to have this funded. And so, you know, I think, I think that we've gotten closest to budget guidance as we've ever done in the history, probably, of the school system. But at the same time, that means what we're presenting is our absolute essential need. And so that needs to be communicated, I think, to our Board of Supervisors and to our, to our community. And so whether that's the right approach or not, I think it's the most honest approach. But at the same time, you know, we need it, we need it fully funded. Dr. Garza and all of your staff, I commend you on doing this. I think it was important. I think we had talked about this at length, about needing, you know, with the, together with the Joint Budget Task Force, for where we wanted to be this year, where we know we are going next year, to, I think it's very, very responsible to propose a budget in this way, in this manner. It still allows us to get minimum compensation recognition to our employees, and it allows us to, you know, do the bare minimum, as we said. What it doesn't allow us, as many of our colleagues have talked about, to allow that creative approach. I think, Ms. Evans, you started off the conversation by stating that, you know, we continue to have growth, and the growth that we're experiencing, particularly in a few of our districts in particular, it's highlighted that the needs of these children and the growth. Dr. Garza did have that in the budget with the additional ESAL services and what that needs to be done. But we know we need additional creative solutions for this. And as we work forward this year, toward the end of this year, looking at our strategic plan, I think we will have additional needs that we see surface. But that will be projected in the following year's budget, which we already know is tough. But at this point in time, I just truly commend the staff. I commend our Budget Chair and Vice Chair for your hard work. I commend you and your staff. And also, Ms. Strauss, you mentioned in the beginning, I think I was at one of those meetings where you, where you talked about Chairman Bolivar, talking about what a priority where we are, where we are at the top of the pyramid. And presenting the budget in this way is a very responsible way to do it, and I'm hopeful that the words that were spoken will commence into action. And I'm looking forward to a budget conversation that is progressive and honest. And so we will begin the conversation again on Monday. So thank you all. Next, we have Student Representative Matters on our agenda. That's Agenda Item 3.03, and I call on Mr. Latif.
Thank you. Please excuse my voice. It's that time of year. Chairman Durnett Kofax, Dr. Garza, members of the School Board, happy 2015. We made it. Mine, along with thousands and thousands of other families across the county, appreciated the wonderful 16-day-long winter break. It's a great time to relax, travel, recuperate before taking on the, as we've seen in the last couple of days, brutal winter months. And now a topic I'm guessing you'd assume I'd cover tonight, snow days. Talk about student opinion being loud and clear. I'm confident everyone got enough in the last 48 or 72 hours. Obviously, no one wanted the mix-up we had this week to occur, and the only person or entity I blame is Mother Nature. I trust that in future, when we face snow, ice, or to quote one of my friends, obscenely low temperatures, like we've seen this morning, we will err on the side of caution. As for Twitter and social media, closed FCPs did, in fact, become a worldwide trending topic. Domestically, we heard from folks as far away from Texas and California. Internationally, people from as far away as Australia, excuse me, Germany, Ireland, Argentina, India, and Morocco joined the flurry. Pretty shocking. Got a couple other countries as well. In all seriousness, as I've said in the past, Fairfax County students are fortunate to have a school board and an administration that values, respects, and actively solicits student opinion. However, that opinion can only be taken seriously and should only be taken seriously when it's presented in a respectful and well-thought-out manner. It was remarkable to see how tens of thousands of students from across the county joined together in a common cause, however interesting it may be. But to quote the Vice President of the Student Advisory Council, Anastasia Slopikova, "If we," being the students of Fairfax County, "can be a top trend on Twitter, think of how powerful we can be if we actually stood up against real issues like bullying and suicide." Shifting gears, I have a story from break, sort of relates to a comment Ms. Strauss made. Over the break, through an interesting coincidence, I attended a holiday party hosted by Finland's Ambassador to the United Nations, Mr. Kai Saur. Since Finland is recognized as having one of the finest public education systems in the world, and their educational practices are, in some respects, very, very different from our own, I asked the Ambassador what made his country's schools so unique. I was told how there are no mandated standardized tests in Finland, other than one taken at the end of the senior year of high school. There are no rankings, comparisons, or competition between student schools or regions, thanks to the fact that every school has the same national goals and draws from the same pool of university-trained educators. A Finnish child has a good shot at getting the same quality education, no matter where in the country he or she may live. Finnish students also score exceptionally well on international comparative exams and have done so consistently. All this in spite of the fact they spend 30% less per student than the United States. In a recent Smithsonian Magazine article, a member of Finland's Ministry of Education and Culture said that, quote, "We prefer children to learn how to learn, not how to take a test." Though some critics say that Finland is not a relevant educational example for the United States due to its comparatively tiny economy, low poverty rate, and low poverty rate, I would suggest looking into establishing some kind of relationship between FCPs and a counterpart school division in Finland, similar to what we have with our friends in South Korea. Perhaps we'll see Dr. Garza and a few School Board members on a flight to Helsinki, and believe it or not, it's 15 degrees warmer there than it is in Fairfax. It's beautiful this time of year, apparently. Looking forward, I'll be meeting with the Student Advisory Council at South County next Wednesday morning, and the week after that, I'll be meeting Dr. Lipp, Dr. Baylor, Ms. McLaughlin, and many others to work on this year's community conversation on teen stress. I had planned on making remarks concerning our new business item, but I talked about that in the forum. Also, a reminder that applications to become the 45th Student Representative are due Friday, January 16 at 4:30. More info on how to apply can be found in my last newsletter. It's actually posted to Board Docs. Regarding comments made during citizen participation, which I feel obligated to address, as I've said many times at this table, at the SAC and on social media, each and every freshman, sophomore, and junior student in FCPs is eligible to run for the position of Student Representative to the School Board, and I suggest that everyone who's interested to do so. It's an amazing opportunity. When I was elected last February, I was not a member of the SAC, the School Board's Student Leadership Development Program. I was a student who was interested in how the School Board affects my life. I'll explain the selection process. We had 18 candidates from all across the county run, from schools ranging from Langley to Lake Braddock, Robinson to Fairfax to Woodson. And after five hours of debate, I was honored to be selected. The election process, as it exists in School Board Regulation 1802.9, is that roughly of a representative democracy, and since it seems to be working for the U.S., I suggest we keep it that way. Lastly, after the SAC meeting next week, I will hopefully have most of my school visits for the third quarter scheduled. So far, I've driven just under 200 miles, visiting 10 high and secondary schools across the county, and I'm very much looking forward to seeing the rest before my term ends. And happy two-hour delay, everyone at home. Sleep now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. Moving on to Agenda Item 4.01, Revised Beliefs and Mission, and I call on Ms. Evans for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the School Board approve the Revised Beliefs and Mission statements as detailed in the Agenda Item and update the Strategic Governance Manual accordingly.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Reed. Would you like to speak to your motion?
At this time, Madam Chair, I'm not going to speak to the motion. I'm going to make my second motion.
All right.
Unless, you might want to call on Ms. Reed to see if you don't want, okay. This is my amendment. I move to postpone board action on Agenda Item 4.01, Revised Belief and Mission, to the January 22, 2015 School Board Meeting.
Seconded by Ms. Schultz.
Oh, okay. So I do want to speak to that motion. I am asking the Board to postpone the vote for two weeks' time. The substantive discussion on this, these changes took place at our July retreat, which is about seven months ago. And we've had a few questions raised just in the last couple of days about how we came to make the changes from reading proficiency in grade three to replacing it with a more general statement about literacy. I did go back, or tried to go back, over some of the history, and I actually have not yet been able to piece together, at least not to my satisfaction, the genesis of it, the discussion about it, and the decision-making process. Several of us, I know, I've had a couple of conversations with Board members. We have a general idea of our thinking on it, but I have not been able to locate anything except the notes from the retreat, which says that we had, we had been in general agreement about this change. I've today emailed Hank Gomitro, who was our consultant who was leading that. I believe he has more detailed notes on that, and I would like to access that before we move forward with it. You know, certainly, I feel strongly about the issue of reading proficiency by grade three. I think that's certainly an important measure. If we're not going to put it in here, I think we have to be extremely clear about where exactly that would go. So at this point, I would ask that you give me two weeks to put that together and answer some of these questions and basically review this. I don't think there's any urgency to passing this tonight. We've, it's been kind of hanging fire for seven months, so I would just ask for a postponement. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz.
Yes, thank you. Well, I want to thank my colleague, Ms. Evans, who spoke very eloquently on that. And I think that, in general, this board, you know, our former board colleague, Ms. Hohn, made some compliments during citizen participation about the great strides that this board has made. And I think in many respects, on issues of transparency and accountability, we've done some really tremendous things. We are now audiotaping our forums. We're now videotaping our work sessions. And I think there's been a real deliberative effort on the board to do more in documenting the public's business. So when this came forward, in terms of dovetailing the language into what would actually happen, this is one of the areas, I think, where we have a little bit of a hiccup, because our board retreats are, and I know we've discussed this before, but they're not taped, videotaped, they're not audiotaped. And we actually had a paid consultant who acted as a, you know, as a moderator. And at the end of the day, when we're trying to figure out how language that in June of 2012, this board set as a belief, I mean, we, and we went through a lot of effort to say it's a belief that we think that it's fundamental for the success of children in education and life, to be reading by third grade, how we lost that, like, are we unbelievers now? Are we nonbelievers? Are we anti-believers in that? And none of us could seem to recall, because we don't have documented, even the posters where we did all of our brainstorming for the strategic plan are not in our possession. So we don't have PDF versions of those. Those are with the consultant. We didn't get a synthesized set of notes back from the consultant. And I think that when we take something that we do over the course of, you know, basically 48 hours in the Gatehouse Cafe as a retreat that turns into strategic action that, seven months later, now unseats a belief that this board set two years ago on something so, excuse the pun, fundamental, you know, reading is fundamental. I think we've got to be very careful that the work product that we did at a retreat doesn't slue us its way forward into action without us being really sure that we, as a board, that somehow we took a vote to take out reading is a fundamental step to success for children by third grade. And so this isn't time-critical, and I really think that it behooves us to attempt to contact the contractor and get some of those notes back, because nothing is memorialized from that retreat. So now we're trying to do it from memory, and it's too significant, this is too important to the kids and the families in our, in our division. So there's no reason not to, frankly, put it off two weeks. We might find that somehow it is memorialized exactly as said, and in that case, in two weeks, we'll take the vote on it, and we'll see where the vote lies. But until then, I think we need to respectfully take the time to make sure that something we did seven months ago is properly articulated before we just pass it as a belief of this board, shaping direction to the superintendent and staff.
Next, Ms. Smith.
I'm going to speak in opposition to the amendment, and I'm not going to get into the beliefs, because the amendment is about postponing the vote. But the Board did spend time at our retreat talking about this, and we made a decision that we wanted to make these changes. And then we also brought this, I believe it was our December work session, that we brought this forward to the Board, showed the Board what the changes were in the strikeouts, and then the Board decided that we wanted to bring this forward for a vote at this meeting. So we've kind of gone through the process. We've decided it, and we, in my mind, the Board wanted to get that work done and approved before we keep moving forward with the strategic plan. So I am going to vote in opposition to the motion.
Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I will share my thinking on why I support the language that is before us. In other words, I am prepared to vote for that tonight. Many, many years ago, it was sort of the common thinking that you had to, that you learned to decode by third grade, where you learn to read, and after that, it is reading to learn. Reading is far more complex than that. We know that, as we talk about the need for preschool, vocabulary development, phonemic awareness by third, fourth, by three, four, and five-year-olds is critical, which is one of the reasons why we are pushing so hard for preschool, is that literacy at that very young age. Children learn to decode then, in kindergarten, first, second grade, third grade, yes. But then, if you look at the latest studies, not only of our own children, but nationwide, it is critical that students learn, that the, learning to read continues at every grade level. In fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, particularly in middle school, children are learning to read much more complex text. When we look at 21st century learning, the need to be able to read scientific literature, to be able to read primary documents, to, it's not, you know, a lot of us, when we were in school, it was, well, if you could read the novels, you were fine. That's, you know, we are so far beyond that. When we talked about literacy as a life skill, it helps us to look at the need to learn, to continue to read, well, really preschool through 12th grade. It isn't that, that, third grade is an important passage, but it is not the only passage. If you only take your foot off the pedal in third grade, and we see that nationwide, we see that in our own studies, then you see reading begin to decline again, particularly in middle school, when kids are maybe not as interested. And we can't take the foot off the pedal. So by having literacy as a life skill, it keeps us with the foot on the pedal for reading skills at every grade level, and not to give up just at third grade. Many years ago, we did tend to only look at that, and we only really measured, we only cared about it in third grade. We must care about it in a complex way in every year of our students' instruction. This is why I supported having this belief statement stay at a higher level. When we look at our student goals and the information that comes back to us, we do see our, how our children are doing at all the grade levels, and we look at the third grade as well. But I believe we need to put a strong emphasis on literacy in every single grade level, not just third grade.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Valkoff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to oppose the delay here. I mean, this has been on the table for, not on the table, but it's been in development for six months. And as Ms. Smith said, I think we saw this in governments... for six months, and as Ms. Smith said, I think we saw this in governance’ work session recently. So we’ve had plenty of time to consider this. I think there’s a bit of a streamlined and focused issue about making a delay here. You know, I think, the advantage of the delay, as I see it, is we’ll get some more notes from Mr. Gomitro, which will document what we believe was said at the retreat, but then, in the end, we’re going to have to decide anyway. And, I mean, if there’s, there’s obviously a concern about this particular change, and I would say, the way to address that is to simply make a motion to strike that change here tonight, and then we can vote on that issue up and down right here. So I’m not going to support the motion to delay.
Next on the agenda is Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Heinz.
I appreciate what my colleague, Mr. Valcoff, just said, but I’d like to maybe give a slightly different take on it. This is our first meeting back after the break, and, you know, thankfully, as board colleagues, we also got an opportunity to refresh and recharge our batteries, and, you know, it came to our attention in talking to some of our most knowledgeable and passionate advocates on reading and literacy and academic achievement, that this change, that we might have talked about six months ago, but we haven’t had a recent conversation with the public on it, and as they reviewed it and saw the language as our action item and said, I don’t think you quite captured what a world-class public school system should be saying about literacy and reading. And so, what I like about this motion is it’s not about streamline and focus. What it’s saying is, if we believe these belief statements have value, then we need to get it right. And when the community of advocates who are knowledgeable, and, quite frankly, have pointed out that we may in fact be leaving out language that is a national benchmark, and it’s critical to us helping educate our community on what is one of the most important markers for academic success, and, quite frankly, life success, which is proficiency at third grade. I think that postponing for two weeks is an extremely prudent action on the part of this board. It takes two more weeks for the 12 of us to confer with one another and say, is this language correct? Because we’ve got enough of us on the board that are saying, hold on, if, we’re not sure that this is our best, our best and final language, and it’s not rewriting the Magna Carta, for goodness sakes. So I really hope people will see the merits and the value of just postponing this for two more weeks. Let Ms. Evans and Ms. Schultz present to us revised language that we vote on in two weeks. I don’t see what’s lost, and I really hope people see the value by voting to postpone.
Ms. Heinz?
Thank you. I appreciate what Ms. Evans is trying to do here, I do. I think, I also wanted to say, I appreciate Ms. Strauss for going ahead and talking a little bit about the merits here, because I think it reminds us why we made the change six months ago. And I do also find myself thinking that going back to reading proficiency by third grade is limiting, and I don’t think it’s something that I would go back to, because I think it was a good conversation we had. But I get it, you know, when you take a specific objective like that and replace it with a more general goal statement, I think it’s natural for people, and some people in the community, to maybe wonder or worry that maybe we’re retreating from that objective. And I don’t see that that’s what’s going on here. But I wanted to maybe check with Dr. Garza, if I could sort of put her on the spot for a second. When we talk about literacy as, if we replace this with literacy is an essential life skill, will we be retreating from the, what I consider the objective within that of reading proficiency by third grade?
I would say absolutely not. In fact, I was hoping, after you all finished this debate, I was going to actually make sure that the public’s very clear that the commitment to reading instruction in this system absolutely remains and more fervent than ever, ever, I hope. I know as an elementary teacher, I know about the value and importance of literacy across the board. I understand what is being said about reading proficiency by the end of grade three. I think that concept has expanded a little bit more. I think that’s a critical benchmark, and I think, if I recall correctly, the conversation that the board had is they still wanted us to measure that. In fact, draft plans of the strategic plan have that as a metric, students reading by the end of third grade and on level. Okay? But it’s also a recognition that it’s not just that as a measure. You know, I’m very concerned about students reading on level in middle school and offering appropriate reading instruction at the middle school before they go on to high school, and much more rigorous coursework and content. Kindergarten, as Ms. Strauss, I think, said very eloquently earlier, every step of the way is vitally important. So this is not a retreat, and I hope that’s not the impression, that’s certainly not the case. It’s just the way in which a belief statement is illustrated versus the mechanics of how we hold ourselves accountable. And so I think it was just a matter of, you know, which is the best approach, I think, was what you all had debated, broader concept as a belief statement, but making sure reflected in the strategic plan or metrics, that we can actually report out to the community and measure progress around that very important metric.
Okay, thank you. That’s exactly the question I was asking. So I, you know, when I look back, I actually think we did some good work on this. I think we brought it to a higher level, which I think is where the board ought to be speaking, in a belief statement, which, you know, you just said. And it’s not, I think, you know, goals and measures are the implementation work, and that comes later. So I, you know, I would never say that language doesn’t matter, but we do spend a lot of time wordsmithing as a group, and at some point, I think, we have to say we did our best work here, and it’s time to move on. I don’t know that postponing this for a couple of weeks will make any difference to me. What it might do is reopen the debate and reopen the wordsmithing, you know, that we want to do, that we already did six months ago. And I just, at this point, I don’t see a need to do that. I appreciate the question, but I don’t think we need to do that right now.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do support the postponement for just two weeks. I do think that this is an important exercise. The strategic plan is critical, and we have to get it right. And to what Ms. Schultz said, I’m really concerned about documenting our thought process, making sure that everything is transparent. So from the very beginning, people don’t think, oh, you know, they made a decision at some closed-door retreat that they weren’t at, and there’s no way to figure out what they did, and, you know, it just, it doesn’t go towards this goal of transparency and accountability. I would like to be able to at least build, almost build a file, show our work to date. How did we get to this point? Some of the things that we’ve talked about at the table tonight, for example, I think should be included in there to explain, but it isn’t in there now. It’s obviously not in there now, because there were several members of the public who read the words and had a different impression. So, you know, and it may be, two weeks from now, we just decide, okay, here’s a couple of things. Maybe we take the two notions of literacy and reading by grade three and combine them. Or, you know, it could be something very simple. But I do feel, again, that it’s, for me, that we just, this is the foundation we’re building, and we need to get it right, and we need to make sure everybody’s on the same page. You know, we’re all in this together. You know, if there’s been issues raised, let’s discuss them now. Because I do think that once this becomes a document, it’ll be very difficult to change, and I can guarantee that’s the perspective out there in the community as well. So I do think it’s worth just two weeks. Two weeks is not a big deal. I am very sensitive to spending so much time revisiting and revisiting issues when we’re trying to streamline and focus. I do appreciate that. But in this particular case, with an issue that has been raised, I do think it’s worth just a little more thought and conversation and a documentation of where we are. I’m a bit concerned of where we are, by the way. So I’m hopeful that we can get this back on track in terms of moving forward with a strategic plan that everybody can understand and get behind.
Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I’m sharing much of what Ms. Reed was just saying, in that I’m not, I’m not sure what the consequence of delay really is. This is a foundation document. It’s not a, something that we’re going to be looking at annually, because we don’t. This is typically a four-year process, and we’ve done that, and I think we’re getting ready to approve something that I think is generally excellent work. But I have to admit, and I’ll accept responsibility, I frankly hadn’t focused on this and hadn’t thought about, one of the most powerful reasons that I ran for the school board, which is recognition that we need to make sure that every single child is ready to read at grade three, is reading at grade three. Now, I recognize that that isn’t true of every child, because we clearly have students who are in sixth grade and ninth grade and others who have significant problems with reading, and frankly, with the significant inflow of immigrants and refugees, folks who have not been part of our school system as well, you know, we know that that is something that they’re going to continue to face. So I recognize the broad-based point of the use of the word literacy, and I’m not really disputing that at all. But I think there’s still a foundational commitment that we make to ensuring that every child that starts with our system, when they get to third grade, you know, we’ve done everything in our power, at least, to make sure that they can read. Is that a specific, explicit commitment in the belief statement? It may not have to be, but it has to be, in my mind, at least somewhere. And I don’t know where that is at the moment, so maybe I don’t have to have it in the belief statement, but I have to have it somewhere where I know, and I’m confident and comfortable, that it truly, you know, reflects the power of what I think everybody on this board deeply believes. So if nothing else, I’m asking for a couple of weeks, I prefer, actually, four weeks, so we can, whatever language, or if there is any changes, we can publish that again or make sure that people know what that is again, and if there’s any community concerns about that, they’ll have a chance to share that. But regardless, I need a little bit more comfort, if you will, and confidence that we’ve really addressed and included that language in our commitments to our students, beyond even the belief statement. So what’s the harm? I don’t see it, and I don’t, and I frankly can’t see where having this come again is going to take much time, because at that point in time, we’ll have spent this time debating, and I think we’ll be ready to move on. So I would again echo what Ms. Reed said, this is a foundational document, we need to get it right. Please support this by giving us a few more weeks, at least for Dan Stork, to better understand what he’s voting on and has confidence that it’s going to work the way we expected to. Thank you.
Mr. Moon, followed by Mr. McElveen. I’m sorry, did you?
No, I said the wrong name the first time. But that’s okay, that’s okay. I am going to support the motion. It’s not that I don’t remember the discussion board they had at the retreat. I do remember the discussion board they had at the retreat, but it seems like there are just way too many board members not remembering it. If one or two board members want to just make sure that we did have that discussion and we came up with this consensus language at the time, two weeks is not going to hurt me.
Mr. McElveen?
So I have a question for the maker of the motion. Why has it taken us six months to get this back to the board?
This came to the governance committee, and so it was pending on our agenda. We took a look at it. As the governance committee, we basically, we didn’t look at the substance so much as say, you know, we’re going to codify what the full board did at the retreat. As you know, we brought it to the work session the other day, but it was, if you look back at that, it was very quick. It was just, you know, does anyone have any comments, questions, or concerns? And no one did, and then it was, it went through. So we did not have a substantive conversation there. As far as the timing, it’s just, it was on our agenda, it took us this long.
Right, and I can understand that, but I think it’s, the public needs to understand that the governance committee is where we throw everything, and it takes a long time to get to it. And I think we do need to look at how we do that. And I know my colleague, Ms. Smith, has always laughed about the fact that everything gets thrown at that committee. But, you know, I very clearly remember the conversation, and I remember it along the lines of what Dr. Garza said, in that it was too specific of a thing, and it did not fit with our other belief statements. It was something we threw in there at the end of the process with Randy and Linda in our first iteration of this, and we did want to make our belief statements consistent, and so that’s what we were doing. And I think everyone on this board strongly believes in the importance of reading and other things by the third grade level. So that’s not to say we don’t believe in it, we just wanted to make a cleaner set of beliefs. So I do not support this motion, but I do respect the reasons for bringing it forward.
Okay, I have a couple go-backs. Let me make sure I have everybody, okay, Ms. Evans, you were the first go-back.
I do just want to clarify for everybody that a vote to postpone is not a vote to change this, it’s a vote just to postpone. So some people who want more clarity can have more time to review it. I think something that’s important, I would certainly like to get a unanimous vote on this, if at all possible, and I’m not sure at this point that there are some of us who would support it at this point.
Ms. Strauss?
I believe that Ms. McLaughlin has another thought for some word changes that would at least solve this for tonight and to go on. And I guess that, I think it’s important that that be put out there, because that’s the, if people want a wordsmith again, I know that what Ms. McLaughlin is thinking is the only word change that would make any sense. So, in terms of streamline and focus, we have to make decisions and go on. So I look forward to Ms. McLaughlin’s idea.
All right, well, at this point, we have an amendment on the table that we have to vote for, and I have one more go-back with Ms. Strauss.
So the only thing would be, I appreciate Mr. McElveen acknowledging that we sort of, that governance becomes the garbage disposal, that is the catch-all, and we sometimes don’t know what comes out of it until much later. We forget. Maybe it’s, maybe the better analogy is the pocket on the side of your seat in your car where things fall and you eventually find them. But if we all believe it, as Mr. McElveen just stated, and there is a degree of specificity to a goal, then why lose the specificity even if you want to state a broader intention? And that’s the part that I’m having the difficulty with. If that’s an inherent subset or a specific subset, again, I go back to, in June 2012, we crafted this, we did the work that it was a belief, and to lose that specific language is so essential to members of the community, that to do so, coming back from break, six months, seven months later, and we think that’s what we said, but it’s not documented or memorialized anywhere, so what’s the harm in going back and taking a look? And at the end of the day, and I was going to bring the amendment to just put the language up tonight, but in deference to my colleagues who frequently prefer things to be clean, we thought, okay, well, we’re not going to put an amendment up, we’re just going to put up the postponement, let us go away and clean it up, or not clean it up, come back in two weeks. This is, as Mr. Stork indicated, a foundational document. This is not something, you know, we’re not going to have a work session, you know, in eight, or 10, or 12 months and revisit this. You know, we are crafting the foundation, and if you don’t get the rebar in right, and you don’t pour the cement right, forget it. The building is not going to hold. And I don’t know if it’s not going to hold in six months, a year, or 10 years, but, you know, Dr. Garza’s got it. You know, Dr. Garza and all of us may not be here in four years. And then who’s going to be memorializing this and trying to figure it out? And for something that isn’t documented and isn’t on board docs and isn’t anywhere, there isn’t really any harm done in going and checking, or making sure that we have an opportunity to cogently talk about an amendment and language with each of you. And I was trying to respect you, because we didn’t have time to get to you and discuss amendment language, rather than craft it at the table, which I know many of you don’t like. So I think we need to honor the specificity of a belief that this board already crafted and that exists deeply and is felt deeply in the community, even if you want to add language. language. And I understand the language of the literacy, but literacy isn't reading, you know, riff. Reading is fundamental, so.
Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Smith.
I know we're trying to wrap this up and I was actually counting Mr. Velkoff's minutes. He's recording for each of us speaking. And so, you know, now that we've spent probably 15 to 18 minutes talking about whether we just postpone this for two weeks, I really felt that Ms. Evans said it best. Yes, I've got an alternative if we can't postpone, but the win-win here is what Ms. Evans said. We postpone for two weeks, we look at the alternate language I sent to all of you from the board table, and we hopefully come out with a unanimous vote in support of foundational belief. I think it would be disappointing to leave tonight where you have almost a split vote in support of the belief statement. I think everyone's made very thoughtful points about the pros and cons of what this is, but why not just give the extra two weeks to make sure we get it right? And maybe we're unanimous in two weeks and that's going to speak a whole lot better for us as a board. And I do think that also Ms. Schultz said it best. We can't document, and Mr. Stork stuck, pointed this too, we're not sure exactly where the language is about reading by third grade, so let's just take the two weeks and make sure, again, when we vote on this, we're certain where the different parts are that it's made. Here's the belief, here's the metric, they're both there in granite and stone because it's true. You know, we're going to have an election at the end of this term and at the end of the year and it could be a different board. And when Dr. Garza, you know, finally finds manna in the afterlife of surviving Fairfax County at the helm, which we're a tough bunch, you know, where's that for the next superintendent to honor? So please consider just the merits of two weeks and let's just polish this up and get it right.
Ms. Smith.
Okay, am I on? So I want to make sure that people understand that it's not just our youngest board member who remembers the discussion and what we talked about at the retreat. I do remember the conversation, that we really had a discussion about the beliefs being broader statements and that we are not backing away from this. And as Dr. Garza said, this is definitely going to be something that we measure. It's a metric and it's more appropriate there. And, you know, it is frustrating and I taught first and second grade. I understand that how fundamental reading is, but this is the frustrating piece of our work that, I don't think it looks good to the public that we're having this discussion for so long, that we did the work, we had a robust discussion about it, and that we can't move on from that, that we constantly rehash. I think that I'm comfortable with where we are, I'm comfortable with where the belief is, and I don't support postponing. I think it's time to move on and get to the bigger work and focus on the budget and the other things we need to do. So I don't support changes and I don't support postponing.
All right, I will speak on it briefly. I am the fourth youngest member of the board and I also remember, I remember diligently the passion of the discussion, meaning that we didn't want limited conversation. We talked about the need for early elementary education, early elementary literacy. Literacy is the ability to read and write. So we are not, we, if anything, the broad statement, as Dr. Garza eloquently spoke about it, is the way we talked about this over a long period of time. I do appreciate the need, perhaps in some ways, to better chronicle what we do at a retreat so we don't have these missives. And I also do think the time in which it took, and I appreciate the work of governance and I know how hard it is to bring it up within a six-month period, but that is a, that's a problem for us to take so long to do that because we find ourselves in a situation like this. Because what we did was good work for the right reason, for what we needed to have done. We talked specifically about then putting the metric of looking at the third grade benchmark as a critical part of our strategic plan moving forward, making work there. So that is the way I remember it, that is the way half the board remembers it. And it is a little bit unfortunate. I will definitely entertain options to, like I said, look at our retreats in a different way, to make certain that this doesn't happen again. But at this point, because I felt there was such passion and a lot of due diligence and a lot of intelligence that went into crafting this, I can see, when you look at it, how it looks like, why would we change that for that? So I get that public perception, but where we are right now is we are at a point where we are stating, I think, what can be restated again in two weeks. So that's why I don't want to prohibit this vote from going on because the same thing is going to happen because that's what's going to be uncovered. And if anything, I want the people who, where that benchmark is so critical to you, you need to understand that it's critical to us too. This is not something we're going to back away from. This is not something that we will not measure. This is not something that we won't go forward on. We just didn't feel a measurement should be in a belief statement. So, anyone, any other comments?
Ms. Strauss.
I'm going to make a suggestion and I don't want to use parliamentary procedure to do that, just going to make a suggestion. I know that Ms. McLaughlin would like to add language that combines both third grade reading and literacy as a life skill. And if the board decides to make any changes to this, that would be the change. If the maker of the motion to postpone were to withdraw that for 20 minutes, allow Ms. McLaughlin's idea to go forward, then we would have an idea as to whether or not we actually want to make any language changes. Because if we want to make any language changes, I know what Ms. McLaughlin has in mind, would be it. And then we could resolve it today or not. I hate to see us keep lengthening this. So I don't know whether or not.
Yeah, well, we, let's, I've had Ms. Hines call the question, so we'll vote on the amendment that's on the table.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Hines.
My, I, I call the question.
Okay. Who would like to call the question? All those in favor of calling the question to vote? All right, that, I should make a note of who this was. It was Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. Strauss, and Ms. Evans. All those opposed, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, and Ms. Schultz. All right, the question's being called and we will vote on what's on the table. Is that I move to postpone board action on the revised agenda item 4.01, revised beliefs and missions to the January 22, 2015 school board meeting. All those in favor of that? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. And all those opposed? Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, and Ms. Strauss. What was the vote?
Six, six.
Six, six. All right, that motion fails. And Megan, you?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am up with an alternative amendment for consideration. I move to amend the main motion by inserting the language of the current belief statement 13 after the new proposed belief. Quote, "Literacy is an essential life skill." So that, the belief statement now reads, "Literacy is an essential life skill and reading proficiency by third grade is critical for the academic success of all students."
Seconded by Ms. Schultz. Thank you. Do you want to speak further on it or?
I just briefly, as I predicted, and what does concern me is, the public just saw six to six on this motion to postpone and wait two weeks. What that says is, half this board said, "We're not ready tonight to pass this belief statement." I can't imagine leaving here tonight, trying to pass a belief statement where half your board has said, "We're not sure that we got it right and let's, you know, make, let's make sure we can all get behind what are the most important belief statements we have." So here we are. The question is, what's going to happen if my amendment fails? So I hope people might consider the merits, that my amendment is basically saying two things. Yes, literacy is an essential life skill, but also, we know through science and research that reading proficiency by third grade is critical for the academic success of all students. I want that in a belief statement as a county school system that's supposed to lead the nation. I think that is a strong statement. Is it a little bit longer than we'd like it to be? I don't really care, but I will stand by and say, I believe that is one of the most important things that we, as a leading school system, should be saying. So I hope that my colleagues, when you look at the vote we just had at six, six, is this amendment of mine at least a way that maybe we can bring this full board together in support of what I think is one of the most important belief statements we know? And I think that this language captures both.
Ms. Schultz.
Just, you know, the ultimate irony, if one of our belief statements has to be a little bit longer, how about, how about the one about reading so people have to read it?
There you go. Ms. Strauss.
While I was fine with the original language, I understand, for all the years I've been on the board, we've always said something about third grade reading. I will vote for this. I really think we need to go on. I don't think it makes a lot of difference. The metrics are already in where we are going, but we certainly wouldn't want to have anybody think that we didn't think third grade reading was important. So I will support this in an effort to go on. And I don't think it makes a lot of difference one way or another, but if there are questions, this would resolve it and then we're done. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. The amendment on the table, and I'm trying to read backwards, is, oh, that didn't make it any easier. I can't read it. Okay. Okay. I move to amend the main motion by inserting the language of current belief statement number 13 after the new proposed, "Literacy is an essential life skill." So the belief statement will read, "Literacy is an essential life skill and reading proficiency by third grade is critical for the academic success of all students." All those in favor of this amendment? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. All those opposed? Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Mr. Velkoff, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, I hope we will spell out third instead of saying three R.D.
Now, we go back, where are we? We go back to the main motion. And that is, I move to, that the school board approve the revised beliefs and mission statement is detailed in the agenda item and update strategic governance manual accordingly. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Evans would like to comment.
Just very briefly, I want to thank everybody for their thoughtful comments. I think this was actually a very good conversation for us to have at the board table, so I appreciate that. And certainly, I am very, very happy to be voting for this main motion now. And just one other thing, even those of us who are a little bit older do remember that conversation. We just hadn't documented it, so thank you.
All right. All those in favor of the main motion as amended? Ms., I believe it is unanimous. Thank you all. Next, item 4.02, I have a recommendation from the Joint Budget Development Committee and I call him Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the recommendation of the Joint Budget Development Committee as defined in the agenda item.
Seconded by Ms. Strauss. Mr. Stork, would you like to speak?
I would, thank you. This motion actually started, I think, with Mr. Velkoff around budget time and recognition of the fact that we, we know we can do better, need to do better, want to do better in terms of our relationships and really the efforts that we put into developing a budget. And try to do that more effectively with our counterparts on the board of supervisors. And while it took a little while to get all that together, the board of supervisors ultimately concurred with that. So we had a committee that began work this summer and I appreciate my colleagues who were part of that. We had a number of meetings. The initial goals of the group were actually five, and I'm going to read them because I want to make sure people know at least what we viewed as our charge in this process. Number one was to review budget factors in the county and FCPS budget, which will impact revenue projections and spending needs in FY 2016 and FY 2017. Two, establish mutual expectations for both resource and spending growth in the county and school budget. Three was provide a forum for joint multi-year budgeting and planning. Four, review and reaffirm financial management principles that will protect and preserve the ability of the county and schools to provide long-term stability and fiscal integrity and the policy context in which budget decisions are to be considered and made. And finally, produce a report for both boards to review and endorse. We are now at the final point, number five, and just want to briefly, I guess, go through the key parts of what the report has in it. First off, we did take a long-term approach. There are no quick fixes in here, we recognize that, we wish there was. We know that getting additional revenue to meet the needs, our growing school district are frankly one of our biggest challenges and one that we frankly have still not met. But we know we can build on that process. We can shore up, if you will, the foundation for the future by laying some better, kind of better stones and more solid stones in terms of how both the county and the schools look at budgets and how we communicate. And just as importantly, maybe the most importantly, how the public can use the language that we use that will be similar to understand and appreciate what our challenges are. So there are four key parts to this. One was infrastructure, excuse me, one was the budget process improvement, which was to develop consistent and common language. The second was what we would consider more smart services, smart savings. Those included things like a joint transportation opportunities look, which we are expecting to do in this report references, reduce office space needs by looking at joint colocation and other ways that we can be more efficient. We already have an early childhood development committee that has looked at these issues and working jointly between the schools and the county. And we have some stronger metrics expectation, things that we can use to better measure what we do well and maybe what we can do better. And finally, we had identifying at least broadly revenue opportunities, profers, or repurposing money. It clearly didn't identify, here are some major revenue streams. It didn't really address those things because those weren't specific charges of the committee. While we recognize that those are ultimately objectives, if our school system is going to maintain, we believe the quality that we've had for so long. The third major category was financial management improvement. That included looking at our budget and reducing the dependency that we've had on one-time funding, that dependency which began in the recession when the federal government stepped in and provided us with millions and millions of dollars to carry us over when the state funding frankly collapsed on us almost. They stopped funding us at a level that, and stopped growing that. The county essentially had no more money because of our challenges. But those one-time money dependencies have really created challenges for us going into the future and you heard a lot about that today. Also, replacement and reserve funding, making sure that our language and our approaches to replacement and reserve funding are the same. The county has innumerable reserves and replacement funding. We have just a couple and the difference is sometimes confusing to the public and we thought we could be more consistent with that, would help everybody understand how the two of us compare to that, to those, if you will, pots of money that are, that aren't necessarily out in the open all the time. And finally, we had, in what I consider maybe the most important thing that we agreed upon, was a strategic vision and goal-setting process, which would start with the June retreat of both of our boards. We do meet on occasion, but we typically meet on very specific issues. And this goal-setting strategic visioning opportunity was essentially to be a broader meeting. We have our own strategic plan that we're building and we know the county has worked on one. We can do better for all of us, all citizens of Fairfax County, all residents of Fairfax County, if we can better connect. County, if we can better connect and agree and get some, really, some consensus on those areas that we clearly need to fund better, or those areas we may be able to reduce services or reduce costs and do other things to try to strengthen the overall product, which is helping every child, every resident of Fairfax County reach their full potential. That's truly what we believe we're trying to do. We think the Joint Budget Development Committee gives us one step closer, and there are a number of action steps that are in this that we expect and to follow through on once the board has approved that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Strauss.
Yes, I want to, I wholeheartedly support the committee recommendations, and I'm going to thank the committee and Mr. Stork for all the hard work and our colleagues who worked on this. I think this is a significant step forward, and I particularly agree with the common language and the common look of our budgets. I think that improves the transparency. I think both boards, we knew what we were doing, Board Supervisors knew what they were doing, and truth be known, we knew what each other was doing. But this helps the community, because in the end, it is the community that we are serving. It's their tax dollars, and it's their goals that we have to meet. So thank you very much for the hard work, and I think it was Mr. Velkoff that sort of started the ball rolling. I wasn't as optimistic that this would result in the recommendations that have come forward, but it has. So thank you very much, and I am hopeful that we will continue this and we will continue moving forward and get to a better spot. So thank you very much.
Ms. Smith.
I think we got to some issues in this committee that will help us with budget development. I think it's still going to be hard because we're still going to have to advocate for our funding, but there were a couple of things especially that came up in here that I think were important. And one of them Mr. Stork referenced was the idea of how each of the different boards has reserve funds differently, and we know this is a problem for us, that we don't have a reserve fund for technology or for buses or things like that. So I think if we can have that equal discussion, hopefully, that will help benefit the school system needs. The other thing that's been a frustration for us is the part that the county comes out with budget guidance at the end of their budget, and they base it on their revenue. They say, "Okay, you're going to get 3%." And so one of the things that was put in here on page 2 and D is that we're going to talk about the cost drivers for the budget. They might not give us a recommended guidance that we want, but it's important for the public to be aware, before that guidance comes out, these are the cost drivers for the school system. So just finding those two pieces, I think, will help us. The other piece that didn't quite make it in here that I advocated for was if we can get the county to stop blaming any tax increases on the school system, because really, they're paying for services across the whole county, and so who do you say you fund first? I mean, they say the schools are their first priority. We could say that the taxes are going up for fire and police. So I hope we can change that attitude as we go through this process and look at funding the needs across the county, but I will support this motion. Thank you.
Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank the members of the committee. I think, obviously, this is good progress, a lot of good work, and any time that we meet together with supervisors, particularly to talk about the stickiest wicket in the room, the budget, and how we spend money, that's progress, absolutely. I'm struggling a little bit, and maybe if the members of the committee could help maybe answer some of my concerns or questions, because I think it's good progress, but only on kind of half of the conversation, because when you look at this document, what you see over and over again is we have to reduce spending. Many times in the work, it says revenues will not meet the needs. You know, our revenue, we know that our revenues will never be enough to meet the needs, so here are the things that we can do collaboratively and creatively to reduce spending. So it's all, the conversation was so much on the expenditure and savings side, and I, you know, I think that if we're really going to have the whole conversation, we have to talk about how we can be creative and work together on the revenue side as well, because we know that the status quo is not sustainable. And so for that to be the beginning of the conversation and to be the underpinning of the whole conversation just concerns me. You know, the idea that, as it says over and over again, that revenue will not keep pace, I mean, I, you know, I just don't even think that's a rational statement. We cannot put together a budget anytime soon in the foreseeable future that is smaller than the budget that we have now. I mean, we just know that. We've already seen what's going to happen in 2017. So I worry about, I mean, I want to support this, but I worry about supporting something that's, from my perspective, really only talks about half of our obligation as public figures and as politicians, because the other half of it is to be willing to have that conversation together about how we fund our critical needs, and that's just not in this yet. And I also, you know, I kind of, I'm concerned about going forward. I'd like to know what this community conversation about common goals and sort of strategic visioning is going to look like. Are revenues also going to be off the table in that conversation when we go to the community to talk about priorities? You know, is it going to be, well, the pot of money's not going to change, so what are our priorities? Or is it going to include, you know, when you look at the list of priorities that the county now works from, one of them is, you know, not that we don't want taxes to rise too much, and I get that. That's a priority for everybody. But are we going to allow people to discuss balancing that against the school system? You know, and I, I mean, I, so I worry that when the Joint Budget Development Committee agenda was so, almost completely focused on saving and expenditure side, is that what the community conversation is also going to be? So that worries me a little bit. And I, you know, I look at the Infrastructure Finance Committee, that was great work, but they, you know, we haven't done that again, right? We sort of started that conversation, and we haven't continued it. So I worry that this, it could be the same situation, where we've started the conversation, we've left out a huge part of it, and are we going to even continue it? So, I mean, again, I don't want to rain on the parade because it's really good work, and it's essential work, but I just wanted to maybe see if anybody wanted to respond.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Well, I do echo certainly a request that Ms. Hines has made. It'd be great to have some of the committee members maybe answer some very thoughtful concerns that she's raised. I just want to say that while I see this Joint Budget Development Committee, and if I recall, it's actually both Ms. Reed and Mr. Velkoff together who presented it to us, and so I want to thank both of them for coming at this and seeing the benefits of it, and having served on some of these, you know, joint efforts with our Board of Supervisors. I continue to be thrilled when we find opportunities to do this. I think we owe it to our citizens, and it goes back to my message earlier of one county. So I think what I want to share, and it may follow along with Ms. Hines' remarks, but mine's going to go back to the equity and fairness issue. So I saw this first stab at the work that's been done as really a first great step, and there is some long-term good work that's going to come out of it. But Mr. Stork made a comment of no quick fixes. I was definitely a Pollyanna. I wanted some quick fixes. You know what I wanted quick fixes on? I wanted this committee to come back to us and say, "Can we all agree between the two boards, what is the reasonable carryover amount for a $2.6 billion budget? They have about $2.5 billion, we got $2.6 billion. If they've got carryover amounts every year, do they want us to have one or not? If they don't want us to have one, then what do we know as best practices on operating on that budget before you're fiscally irresponsible?" And so the carryover amount, I, as the Pollyanna, really hoped that was going to get hammered out. So we'd stop having that as the arrow that keeps getting volleyed at us every year of, "You've got more money to spend, and you just choose not to spend it." Second thing is the parity in employee compensation increases. Again, if we are looking at one county, I wanted this Joint Budget Committee to come back and say, "You know what? For 10 years, it's been a horse race. Sometimes the school system employees got a raise, and the county didn't. And then the county did, and the school system didn't. And everybody's pointing fingers going, 'How come they got a raise this year and we didn't?'" So after Sharon Boliva did the research with her staff, found out after 10 years, we came out almost on the same, this was the perfect year to say, "Okay, going forward, since we think everybody's about the same over the last 10 years, going forward now, if we do 4% on this side of the aisle, we're going to do 4% on this side of the aisle." And that was what I really hoped would have been the joint agreement. So those are the two things that, in a very concrete, very specific, very FY, you know, 16 budget cycle that we're in the midst of right now, I kind of had hoped we would have hammered out. So I don't know where that leaves us. I think we, doesn't mean we can't still have conversations on those things, but I just wanted you all to know, I'm afraid these are two of the, you know, sticking points that I don't think we got hammered out, and we're going into another budget cycle where I think they're going to be sort of hanging around, and I hope they don't create a problem for us.
Ms. Reed.
Just to respond to Ms. McLaughlin, I would say that, in my view, those are the types of issues that the two boards together should be discussing in June or whenever it is that we, that we get together in the hopes that we can address those, and then as we go forward in 2017 and beyond, we'll at least have discussed it as one county group. And so that would be my thought on that particular thing. It was hard enough to get what we did accomplish, to be honest with you. And finally, I would just like to thank Mr. Stork for his leadership. I know this was a heavy lift to get us to this point. About halfway through, there's some people saying, "Uh-oh, you know, we're going to get anywhere with this thing." And then, you know, then we started with, "Okay, let's have action plans. Let's have some specific suggestions that we can take and work on." And I know staff have already begun to implement many of the recommendations, even in this FY 16 budget in terms of the terminology used, you know? So I do feel maybe it's baby steps, maybe it isn't those huge rocks, you know, that have been moved quickly, but I do feel like we're moving in the right direction, and certainly, we're further ahead now than we were before.
Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to commend Mr. Stork's leadership and the work of your colleagues on this committee. I think it's a very pragmatic document, and I think it's, you know, reflects what could be done in the near term, and I think there's very much to be proud of here. You know, we had, it's interesting, if you think back to some of the speakers tonight, they referred to, I'm thinking of Ms. Adams from FEA, Ms. Kilpatrick from SECPTA, and also our former board member, Tina Hohn, referenced the progress in the two boards working together. I mean, I think there's quite an achievement to reflect upon, and I think this document is one tangible piece of that progress. So I certainly want to support this, and again, just thank everybody who was involved in it. Ms. Hines, I do want to answer your challenge, because I share, I share your concern that there's, there's perhaps a flavor of acceptance of the status quo that makes me uncomfortable. And again, I'm respectful of the pragmatism, but I think the challenge, and it may be for next, the board that comes in a year from now here, and the new Board of Supervisors, maybe the challenge that I would give them is to really start going after some of those, to really question the assumptions that cause the roadblocks, right? I mean, we had the Infrastructure Finance Committee, and I think there was, I think what happened, one of the things came out of that was, "Well, by golly, you know, there's a huge underfunding of infrastructure here in the county, but, you know, we've got these constraints, and I guess we can't do anything about it." And we're kind of in a similar situation with the operational budget, where, you know, we accept that, you know, there's only so far you can push property taxes in this county, but then are we going to say, "Well, we just have to live within this?" And I think it's, Ms. Hines, as you were alluding to it, I think it is our responsibility as elected officials to solve these problems and to challenge the assumptions that are preventing us from solving the problems. And so I hope that the boards in the future, perhaps starting next year, will look for, you know, what is that unified vision? I loved what Ms. Kilpatrick said, "One county, one vision, one future." So we start with the end goal in mind, as Dr. Garza would say, and then we say, "Well, what is it going to take to get there?" And you're going to run, and as soon as you get to that, as soon as you start asking, "Well, you know, are we okay with the class sizes?" Well, if we're not okay with class sizes, if we want them smaller, it takes more money. Where's that going to come from? And you have to start asking, "Well, can we get there if we're just relying on property tax?" There's a whole bunch of assumptions that have to be challenged, and my challenge to us as elected officials and our colleagues on the other board, let's say, a year from now, is let's start talking about challenging assumptions about the nature of government.
All right. Any other? Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to kind of final go back on a couple of points. First and foremost, I wanted to apologize to Ms. Reed, because she's not here, but I did fail to include her as part of the motion that the chair and vice chair last year made to start this process. I wanted to recognize frankly how important I, at the time, frankly, I was very skeptical myself of that it would amount to much, but I think it's clearly proven to be a valuable process, and, you know, again, thank you both for your efforts. Secondly, I wanted to especially thank Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael. They made a huge difference. I spent a lot of time working with them, they spent a lot of time working with us, and frankly, they spent even more time working with county officials to put together much of the language and the narrative. That really was a staff-driven narrative, which it should have been, but we clearly had, they clearly put together the basic outlines of what we thought were possible, and I think that's really made a huge difference. And in my mind, got us to the next level, to the next step, which is, why is it, why is this time going to be different? And I deeply believe that this time is different because we put together, we didn't settle for a narrative. We put together a matrix, as again, my colleague Ms. Reed would say, that identifies a table that identifies not only what the particular action item is, and we documented in this document, but also the committee discussion notes, things that we talked about going forward. We identified the lead development responsibility, so somebody owned getting that done and moving it forward. We also identified next step, so it isn't just, "Okay, somebody owns this," but we also said, "Okay, here's what you're going to do next with this." And finally, we identified completion dates. So to get something done in this world, you've got to have a plan, and yes, it isn't, I guess, getting us all the way where we want to go, but it clearly gets us down the road, and we have something to measure our progress by, and for that matter, the public does too. So this is a great opportunity for us. I assure you, I'm going to stay on top of it and keep moving it forward, and I'm confident with your support, and obviously, our work with the Board of Supervisors, we can truly make this a reality over the next, you know, year or so, because ultimately, it's going to take a year or so to, I think, fully realize what's in here. So thank you all very, very much.
All right. The amendment on the table is that I move that the school board approve the recommendation of the Joint Budget Development Committee as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? Mr. Moon, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnett, Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, with Ms. Reed and Ms. Schultz away from the table. The motion passes. All right, moving along. Tonight, we had no action items from closed meetings, so we are going on to our consent Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be reviewed from the consent agenda at the request of the board member prior to each meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the November 10, 2014 Operational Expectations Work Session and the December 18, 2014 Regular School Board Meeting. 5.02, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to new business. Moving on to new business. The following new business will not have a vote tonight, but the action is scheduled for a future meeting, and this particular agenda item was discussed in forum tonight and will be taken back to forum, and that is item 6.01, effective January 1, 2016, the annual salary for each member of the Fairfax County School Board will be set at $40,000, and the school board chairman will be paid an additional annual salary of $2,000. Next on the agenda item is superintendent matters. Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'll be very, very brief. I just want to use just a moment of the time tonight to acknowledge the heroic efforts of all of our staff, faculty, parents, everyone who really stepped up this past Tuesday and helped us respond, I think, very, very well to what would, I think, most people would recognize were very challenging circumstances. It made me very, very proud to be a part of FCPS, you know, principals who said, I'm short, ten teachers, but we, we're making it work. It's all great. So many people stepped up to the plate, and I'm just very grateful for those efforts. And again, I just want to thank everyone for helping us on that important day, and we got everyone home safely, which was most important. So thank you, and that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, board reports, committee reports, and I call on Mr. Velkoff for comments from the forum tonight.
I'm just looking for my notes. Here we go. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, at the forum today, we discussed proposal from Mr. Moon to increase the school board salary by $20,000. School board members expressed a variety of opinions about whether, whether to increase, how much to increase, and rationale for those choices. We chose to carry over the discussion until into the forum in two weeks on January 22nd and to postpone the vote, which would be rescheduled by the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. And next, our board matters, and I call, I call on Mr. Moon.
Pass, Madam Chair.
Ms. Reed.
Just very briefly, I'm sorry I was away from the table when we had the vote. It certainly wasn't reflecting my lack of interest and support in the Joint Budget Development Committee recommendation, so wanted to say that first. And secondly, I wanted to say that several of us participated in a webinar on the budget that was provided by VSBA, and that was very insightful and helpful. Most of it was review, I think, for, for those of us on the board, but it was very useful because you also got to hear a little bit about what other school districts do. And so, so that was very good. Marshall High School, again, a shout out to you, the Cyber Patriot Competition, first in the state, and they continue to really shine in that area, and I'm hopeful that, that we can really brag about them and get more and more people interested in that because that's clearly a 21st century skill, and that's an area where we're going to need more and more workers and thought leaders. So thank you, and welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year.
Mr. McElveen.
Pass.
Ms. Smith. Who has something tonight.
I have something tonight. I went to meet with Tim Thomas, the principal at Westfield High School, and he informed me that their cafeteria staff received the 14-carat Gold Food Safety Excellence Award that the county does, and all of the other organizations that were recognized are restaurants. And then there's the Westfield High School cafeteria. So award recipients have, have had to receive no critical violations at the completion of all inspections conducted during the past two years, received no more than six non-critical violations during the last year. Employees are able to explain and/or demonstrate proper food handling procedures related to the operation, and then they hold a valid permit. So I think it's pretty exciting that we have a high school that was recognized, and I know he wanted us to share that. So congratulations to the Westfield High School Food Service Staff. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm Mr. Velkoff.
Pass.
Ms. McLaughlin.
As noted earlier, I sure hope my colleagues were able to enjoy the break as much as I know I did with all three of my children and my spouse, who I don't see very much. And so it was very helpful knowing we were going to come into a busy January. I just want to say to anyone in the public who is still watching, including our employees, that I appreciated people emailing me and conveying their concerns and or experiences with, you know, the, the snowstorm that really came unexpectedly. And it is by hearing from you that without a doubt, our school system, our board, can continue to learn on what can we do to improve our practices. I know without a doubt that from the superintendent on down, that we all take very seriously the safety of our students as much as we want them to be academically successful. And so this was a rough week, starting back after the break, but I'm really very proud of this school system, and especially as the staff was preparing the budget presentation tonight, which is months in the making, to have Mother Nature throw this curveball at us, really, thank you, Dr. Garza, and to your team. I hope you can convey that to all of them, that I'm hoping they can all get a very restful weekend after all of this. And to my colleagues, we get the joy of a lovely all-day work session on Monday, so happy reading as we prepare for it, and I look forward to visiting many more of my schools this winter in Braddock.
Mr. Stork.
I'll thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. One is that I appreciated the opportunity to hear from the public, not only in the CIP public session yesterday, and, and as you all know, we had significant numbers of, of members of the Mount Vernon community that spoke. They clearly are passionate. They clearly are concerned about the process, and, and I'm, I'm more confident that they're learning that, that the CIP process itself does not lock the board into any type of commitment to a specific outcome for boundaries or facilities, for facility changes or programmatic changes. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate the superintendent's statement yesterday, just to make sure that there isn't any confusion about that. She identified that the CIP will be updated to provide more detailed, more detail around processes and commensurate board policies and regulations. We have strict school board policies that must be followed and involve extensive community engagement when, for example, a new AAP center program is being considered or a school boundary is potentially changing. Therefore, there will not be any significant changes for the 2015-2016 school year, starting in September. You will be given ample notice when we plan our community engagement and outreach, and we all have talked about that, superintendent and I have talked about that, and that is clearly the commitment of the board. It's part of our policies, part of our regulations. And I guess I just want to make sure, reassure people that we believe deeply in engaging our communities in key decisions like this that frankly will have a model, multi-generational impact. For those of you who still have questions or concerns about the boundary process or the CIP, I have my, my usual, my routine office hours this Saturday. I hold two of them. The first is in the southern part of my district, Lorton area, at Lorton Library, from 10 to 12 o'clock. You're welcome to attend. And then in the afternoon, from 12:30 to 2:30, and probably later tomorrow, will go on later tomorrow, I will also be at the Sherwood Hall Library. In this case, I'll be on the first floor in a larger meeting room. At 1 o'clock, I will start a community engagement on any issues or questions people have about the CIP or a future boundary process. So if anybody has any questions or concerns about that, please feel free to see me or come to that event. I'll be happy to, to listen and respond as best I can, and what I can't respond on, I'll take your information and I'll be happy to follow up. It's a pleasure to represent you.
Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. First of all, I just remind my colleagues, there was a wonderful article in the New York Times about the value of reading to children even after third grade, and the value of reading children throughout your life. Any of us belong to book clubs, and even with adult children in their 30s and 40s, it's great fun to read the same book together. Journal it so you remember what you read, and then discuss it. And you know, some of those books, when your kid is in high school and wants to know, what were the notes that you took on that Toni Morrison book that we all read together? It helps. So read forever with everybody. I have gone out, invited to my community, scheduled me to come in, and we'll talk about the budget, we will talk about the CIP, talk about anything anybody wants. So I'm very busy trying to organize as many meetings, and I've told folks I will do office hours in particular schools if we can't figure out on a meeting date because there is so much now to take a look at and what's been out there. Certainly, as we are concerned about continued student enrollment in the Tysons area, we need to talk about that, one, short-term, long-term, medium-term, and just so that everybody understands, I do believe in high-quality AAP centers with a critical mass. I do believe in local Level 4 in those schools where parents want it, and I do believe in choice. And all of those programs must remain strong and robust. We also have to figure out how we're going to provide enough classrooms as we continue to grow. Some schools we can add additions to, some schools we are in the process of doing it and we can't add anymore. So a lot to talk about. Please let me know when it's convenient. I will come anytime, as long as there's time on my calendar. So we're very busy scheduling a lot of meetings, and I look forward to talking to everybody, anybody on whatever other issues they want to talk about. So thank you very much.
Ms. Evans.
I just wanted to mention some exciting news in connection with an initiative that was brought to us by some Park Authority Board members. They had suggested that we have a pilot program in our middle school after-school program for cricket, which is an up-and-coming game in our area. A lot of, a lot of kids play it. And so they were offering an opportunity to pilot it at one of our middle schools, and I got word today that it appears that there's enough interest and that it can be successful here at this very middle school that we're in, Luther Jackson Middle School. So I particularly want to thank Mark Emery, the head of our middle school after-school programs, and Christine Lyons, the after-school program specialist here at Luther Jackson, for, for working together with the Park Authority Board members, and particularly for Faisal Khan, Park Authority Board member, and Ken Quincy, who is the school board liaison from the Park Authority Board. So this was a great example of a collaborative effort between our two organizations.
Ms. Schultz.
So I just, I want to acknowledge both Principal Dave Thomas and Principal Matt Eline. I continue to make my principal rounds to my middle school and high school principals, and I was so glad to hit four for the price of two, and, and deeply enjoyed the opportunity to meet with them, and particularly the insights that Principal Eline had to offer post Tuesday. So as board members, we don't only hear, hear from parents and students, we also hear from, from principals, and he had some very salient information to share. I want to congratulate Principal Dave Jagels, who started as a principal at Sutterville High School this week. I'm very excited for him and his new endeavor. On February 7th, at the Pohic Regional Library, I am going to be holding community office hours from 10 to noon. And in addition, I am getting ready to set up a series of citizen, community town halls in February, March, April, and May throughout my region, as well as a potential teacher town hall. So please look forward to information coming forward on that. And I would like to salute with my last board matter, our bus drivers. I, particularly in my district, which is, you know, roughly two and a half to three times the size of many of other districts, you know, four-hour bus rides and, you know, just honestly, I think they're heroes, and if I could give you a medal or something, I would. And you kept our kids safe, and you may have hit some mailboxes or something along the road, and some of you may have wept a little bit out of, you know, anger and frustration, and we're sorry. We're going to figure out a way with staff and the superintendent to do things better. But you're, you're the first person in FCPS our kids see in the morning if they take the bus, and you're the last one to see them at the end of the day, and I'm deeply grateful for everything that you went through over the last couple of days for us. So thanks.
All right. Thank you all. I will be reporting at a public hearing this Saturday morning for our state legislative delegation, and we'll be talking about our legislative priorities as well as our needs. So with the session starting, I urge you all to keep up with your emails and, because the legislation is always fast and furious as it comes along, and, you know, any questions or concerns, talk to Mr. McElveen, myself, Mr. Velkoff, and because we as a board have committed to be more engaged and more involved, and we need to do that as, as a unified entity to do that, because it's a lot of things to keep up with. So thank you, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.